All right, the meeting of the Carlisle School Committee is called as order. I'm just reminded that this meeting is being filmed. Each year at the first school committee meeting, the following, following the town election, the first order of business is to seat the new school committee, elect its officers, and make other necessary appointments. After I provide a call to order in the committee, I will request that a school committee member make a motion to seat the Carlisle School Committee members by name. Following this, I'll make a request for nominations for the committee chair. Once the election of the chair is complete, that person will ask for nominations. Vice Chair will run the rest of the meeting. Other appointments will then be made. The appointment that require a vote in addition to the chair and vice chair are the appointment of the school committee recording secretary, the appointment of the treasurer for the Carlisle School District, and the appointment of the members of the regional school committee. Other appointments will be discussed and agreed upon, but do not require a vote. The following are the motions and process that fall for this agenda, seating of the school committee. A motion should be made by a school committee member to recognize the members of the school committee.
So I move to recognize Melinda Gambino, Christine Lear, Eva Mustafi, Sarah Wilson, and myself as members of the Carlisle School Committee.
Second.
Election of the school committee offices, nominations.
We have to vote.
Do we have to vote?
Sure. Made a motion, seconded.
Discussion.
Anybody want to discuss that?
Mr. Chair.
I hope not.
Any discussion?
I think it's great.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Are we allowed to vote?
Yes.
She can't vote. You can say, you can vote.
No, I cannot vote on myself.
Okay, very good.
Well, I did, but it was too late.
Nominations be accepted and voted on for school committee chair.
I move that Melinda Gambino be accepted as school committee chair for the 2019-20 school committee session.
I wholeheartedly second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I.
You're the end for the voting members. Return the gavel over to you, Melinda.
All right. I guess that means I take over.
You're a judge.
Just a ceremony.
You don't have to, but you can. You're the chair. You can do as you like.
That's all right. Thanks.
Give it your own flam, Melinda.
Okay. All right, so I will, I thank you for your nomination and vote, and I will accept nominations for vice chair at this time.
I move that Christine Lear be nominated for vice chair of the school committee.
My second?
Second.
Discussion?
They don't have to.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, so David, is this one of me?
Yeah.
No, you have to wait for the chair.
Oh, I'm sorry, chair.
So I'll take a motion to appoint the secretary, recording secretary.
I would like to nominate Nancy Anderson as the school committee recording secretary.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Appointment of the treasurer, do I have a motion?
I would like to make a motion that we appoint Susan Frey as the treasurer of the Carlisle School District.
Second.
Second, sorry. You're not supposed to say.
All right. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, moving on. Appointment of Concord Carlisle Regional School Committee members.
I'd like to make a motion that we appoint David Modell and Eva Mustafi as the members of the Concord Carlisle Regional School Committee.
I second.
Yes, sir. Discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
And I thank you both. All right, so.
We do need the warrant. We should nominate two people to, one person to be primary and one to be secondary. Signing warrants. And I therefore nominate, well, you should agree to that.
Yes, I'll take a motion for that.
So I nominate Sarah Wilson as primary and Christine Lear as secondary to sign the warrants. I guess you have the second.
Anyone can second.
You can second, because they can't second themselves.
They can, but I'll second it too.
Thank you.
So this involves going to the business office and signing off on the warrants and all that, and it's a good opportunity to see what kind of expenses or bills are passing through.
Don't forget to ask questions.
Yep. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Should we talk about other appointments, long-term capital requirements committee, liaison appointments?
You're the chair. It's up to you.
Edco board. Currently, who's serving on the edco board? That was you as the liaison, right, Jim?
Yes, I represent the district of the board.
Will you continue?
Absolutely.
Okay, good. We don't need to vote on that, right?
Nope.
Okay. All right, other committee appointments can be discussed as they come up.
Okay.
So we can move on.
Sure. I was asked just to comment, I think it's well-known now, but the Carlisle School Committee and the Carlisle Teachers Association reached an agreement on two consecutive contracts, which are retroactive to July 1st of 2018, cover the year that we're in, and extend for three additional years for a total of four years. As everybody knows, it was a long period of negotiation and certain periods of inactivity sprinkled in, and that was much longer than we, any of us had expected when we started the process. However, I will say, I think that we reached a good outcome for both sides, that both sides got certain things that were important to them. I think that both, well, all collectively, the community, the teachers, the administration, I can't speak for students, but I think people involved understand now a little more about the pressures that I've certainly was articulating during the entire process. And now we're very happy that that's behind us and we can all just work together on the most important thing, which is providing the best possible education for the students. So I'm certainly very grateful, and I'm also glad that I was, that we were able to finish that process before we seated a new committee. And so thank you to everyone for their patience during that period. And Cynthia, thank you for fair and accurate reporting, in my opinion, during it.
Thank you, and thank you to Mary, Mary Storzen, to you for seeing that process through and all of your work on that. Okay, thank you. Any members of the public would like to make a public comment? Okay, seeing none, we can move to review approved minutes.
Well, I'm not sure how to handle this, because I had to leave partially away through that meeting to go to the Concord Town Meeting.
Okay.
So I can't really approve all the minutes, because I wasn't there.
Oh, you're still going to vote on the minutes.
Okay.
You can vote on the minutes. Okay, you don't have to go anywhere tonight, right?
I don't know.
Okay.
The night is young.
The night is young. All right, I'll take a motion to approve the minutes, April 10th, second, 2019. Discussion?
Christine should make a motion.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes from the meeting on April 10th, 2019.
Second.
All right. Nancy, I had one small adjustment. Is there any other discussion or comments about the minutes?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, then, moving on to the minutes from April 29th.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the minutes from the meeting of April 29th.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is Mickey going to join us to talk about the DC trip?
Matt is here. Matt, is Mickey joining?
He will not be.
Are you going to talk about the DC trip for us?
I will be.
Okay, are you ready to do that now?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Good evening. I want to hand out, I should give some pleasure, I'm sure. I'm here to describe a little bit of context for the request for an eighth-grade trip to Washington DC for the year of 2020. But before I do so, I want to just describe, especially for the newer members of the school committee and for the public as well, this is a decision that I don't take lightly, especially as it incurs a significant financial cost to our families in Carlisle. So going into this, I did do some research, and I have some research, it did a, similar to like when you buy a house, you look at the comparables. I have comparable analysis of other Washington DC trips of neighboring communities, so I have one, two, three, four, five. I have enough for people to pick and peek at. It is rather complicated, because it is like measuring apples or oranges, I don't know if people will pick and peek as well.
It's the data guy.
So in the left column, you see various middle schools and then the town that they're associated with, as well as the enrollment of an eighth-grade class. Now, this goes back two years, so the data may be somewhat skewed. I have noticed, on average, the cost of a Washington DC trip go up on an annual basis of $80 to $100. There are some variables that are significant, whether, mostly transit. If you fly versus take a bus, the cost is at least $300 to $400 more on average. If you look down the vendor column, that's kind of in the middle, you can see just for your own sense, some vendors are more expensive than others, as well as the travel dates. I mean, there's a lot into when you schedule a Washington DC trip. Also, in this analysis, there is some fundraising efforts at some schools to offset the cost, and then whether or not they do financial aid. I did draw a line across a couple of schools, and you can see, Concord Middle School recently went with EF, Explore America, as their vendor. They have shifted gears, and this year they're using World Strides, that's my understanding. One thing that I would like to direct you to is if you look up on the front page and then you open it up to the inside pages, they have, and I tried to identify the cost with either arrows or circles, but then there are some other PowerPoints going into the cost of other schools, and some of the meals, transportation venues, where students go, because for anything you do in Washington DC, the monuments and like the Smithsonian museums don't have a cost. However, if you do add-ons, if you decide to go on a riverboat cruise up the Potomac, for example, or if you go to the Holocaust Museum, or the museum, for example, those have costs. So quickly, the costs can add up. And my goal, and I'll say this openly, my goal is for all Carlisle students that want to go on a Washington DC trip, that they go, that financial limitations or financial resources should not be a barrier for them to participate. I'm pleased to say that this year, in the 2019 year, we have 65 students going on our trip in about a month. We are flying, we're using World Strides currently, and I am concerned about the cost. It's expensive for our students to go.
How much is it this year?
This year.
So this year, it's $1,295. However, the challenge of this year is it depends on when you pay that cost, and there's various administrative fees that go into that as well. So if you signed up at one point, it is that price, if you sign up at another point, it's a different price. So I'm concerned about that. And what I'm doing, especially as I look at this list, is reflecting and considering on how can we lower the ask of our families.
So when you say when you sign up, meaning when the district decides to book it, or when the vendor pays?
You get an early bird discount.
And if you're on a payment plan, there's a little bit more to pay.
So you can get potentially a discount if you sign up right away.
It's not a lot.
So, yeah, but before we get into the nuts and bolts of it, what I wanted to share with you is, I did an analysis, and there are some decision points in this. If we decide to take a bus, it is significant savings. It's on the average of $300 to $400. That's basically the cost of flying. The educational experience for our students is about the same, because when you take a bus, you're losing a full day of transit. If you leave on a Tuesday and then you come back on a Friday, you're there for really two days in DC. Whereas if you fly, like we're doing in our, in about a month, we wake up very early, we're on a commuter flight, a 6:00 AM flight out of Logan, and then you're in Arlington, Virginia, at National Cemetery at like 10:30 in the morning, 10:00 in the morning. So then you have a full day in DC. So you're not losing time, you're paying for convenience and you're paying for.
Time.
Time, yeah, exactly.
And you have fewer hotel mates.
Um, yeah.
Right, I mean, looking at like Grotten Dunstal, it's like.
Yeah, exactly. So it is, it is something to consider. One thing that I have done is I have already explored other vendors, because we currently use World Strides. We haven't signed a contract for 2020, but it's something that, I am going on the Washington DC trip in a month, Superintendent O'Shea is going as well. I am going to experience it, I want to see what the experience is for students and to live that, before I make a decision formally to go with one vendor over another. That being said, I have received some financial quotes from other vendors, and I can kind of show my hand in a poor poker play here, notably Capital Tours. Capital Tours gave me a very competitive price when you fly in comparison with the two World Strides. Yeah, that was my reaction as well. So if you notice, the World Strides company provided us a quote of $1,409. Compare that with Capital Tours of $1,056. I will say, my goal is to keep this trip in three digits, right? I'd like to get it down.
With the airfare?
Yeah. That would be my goal, is so that's not over $1,000.
Can I ask a clarifying question, Matt?
Yep.
So this year, as you mentioned, the students, instead of having a, like an April break DC trip, and then, you didn't say that, but, you know, for context, an April trip, and then a Boston Harbor cruise event as a capstone for the graduation.
Yeah.
They're merged, which certainly as a parent of an eighth grader makes sense to me.
It's a cost saving.
So that cost is included in this World Strides quote, or at least in the 1,300?
No, it is not.
So neither the 1,300 of this year?
No, this is just the cost out of pocket as quoted from the vendors.
Okay, and so for this year, where it's $1,300, that's also not including the cost of the cruise?
Correct. You're correct. So a little bit of context, in previous years, before I started here, we had a Washington DC trip, it was, commonly, it happened in April vacation, which proved challenging for families, as well as for chaperones. So in an effort, really to tie it closer to the curriculum, we moved this to the end of the eighth grade experience, it's the second-to-last week. It does dovetail nicely with some of the work in English and Language Arts, some of the novels they read, as well as the civics in government and US history and social studies. So it does, it does tie in very nicely with what students are learning about in class. So that's a little bit of the context. We pushed it back to really late, or early June. Prior to that, eighth-grade students would have various activities tied or coupled with graduation, like a Boston Harbor cruise, a Blue Man Group, various activities that would be of significant expense as well. By moving the Washington DC trip to late, later in the year, to early June, that would supplant the end-of-year graduation expenses. But if you look at the comparative, comparative costs, one thing that I am interested in is if you look at the Capital Tours, it would be roughly, a little bit over $1,000, but that does not include any fundraising efforts, nor does it include any offsetting funds from the student activities account.
And so the question I had was, the activities that you were talking about, like the Blue Man Group and some of those things that were traditionally done at the end of the year, those were not funded by parent contributions, they were, it was from the.
Student fund, yes.
Student fund, right, so.
Yep. So I met with the PTL, as well as parent representative of the student funds, and we expressed the urge to allocate that money for the class of 2020 towards the Washington DC trip, thereby further lowering the expenses, and I, as I said, I'd like to see under $1,000.
The challenge there, though, is that that money is not going to go as far as we'd hoped.
No.
Because we still have graduation things that we need to pay for, the ceremony itself. And so it looks like there was only going to be, what was it, about $6,000, Matt?
Yeah, and then we have, in the class of 2020, 73 students, so, you know.
Less than $100 a kid.
It's something.
But is it?
It is.
Is it, Christine, designed to lower the cost for everybody, or provide a scholarship fund for those who might, you know?
I would, I would advocate for both. I would like to lower the tide for everyone.
Right.
And completely eliminate any barriers for access, so that all students that want to participate can.
Wait, you mentioned that things like the crews and the visiting, like the Holocaust Museum, for example, would be add-ons, that would be an increase in the cost.
So if you look at the quote from Capital Tours, and this is where it gets a little complicated to say, if you look to the second page, Capital Tours, they charge us based on the number, the number of students per bus, right? When you're in Washington DC, there's a big bus, so we have, we even need two buses if we get 73 students. And it's $686 per bus, they estimate $350 airfare, that's a placeholder, really, until you lock in the price. What does not, what is not included in that amount would be transportation from Carlisle to Logan Airport. So I asked Bedford Charter to give us a price, and they, if you look in the last page, they quoted us as $290 per day per bus. So that would factor into roughly about $20 per student to get from Carlisle and back. I feel like that's pretty affordable versus asking parents to wake up at 3:00 in the morning to drive to Logan.
We were wondering.
And what about getting back?
Same thing, $20 per bus.
Somebody's supposed to get them here to get the bus.
You do, yeah.
It's four buses.
No, not today.
Two there and two back.
Correct, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
So times two.
So if you look at that, and then you flip on the back page, or second-to-last page, they give you a lot of itinerary, the Holocaust Museum, help yourself, is there. You can see the monuments and memorials, it's very comparable to what people experience in about a month's time. So I guess what I'm asking is for the school committee to, and I don't know, in terms of what you, what you need for policy, to approve the trip, but contingent on me negotiating with the most affordable vendor possible. Or do you require the school committee to know the exact dollar amount? Because I don't have, I don't have that prepared yet.
Well, I don't believe we need an exact dollar amount. I think, I think the school committee, as you point out, Matt, needs to get behind, you know, get behind it. We typically, let me step back, I think last year, we were kind of behind the curve. It was presented, and it was sort of done, and we told ourselves at that point, gee, we should be more proactive. So theoretically, you know, had we done it correctly, and we didn't, I'm not blaming you, we should have asked you to come to the last meeting.
Yep.
To propose it, so we have a month of deliberation, then we could approve it, and you have a month. Now it's kind of late, I don't know your timeline with these guys.
So my timeline, as I said, is I want to go on our current trip, which I will be going, to experience it, to see how the experience is for students, and just to see how it goes, and then talk with Capital Tours to see if we can lock in this price. I, the date was just a couple days ago, it was on April 30th, I think that's due.
What, when's this trip this time, I should know, Matt?
Uh, May 5th through, I'm sorry, June 5th through the 7th, and then if you notice, this 2020 trip, I think, was the same week, basically it's the week preceding graduation, without any significant notice.
Well, it sounds like you'll be going on that trip right before our next meeting, so you'll have had that experience, and you'll be able to collect information in the meantime.
Great.
So that we can have more concrete information.
Yeah, I'm happy to.
The other thing that I think David was mentioning was that last year, we had left with the idea that there might be some fundraising efforts towards it.
Yep.
This year, I think we want a little bit more concrete plan about how.
So our students in December of 2018 had a car wash. They raised about $1,000. We also had a very generous donation from a family, $500, which that, the funds that were raised went to support student scholarships, and which enabled a student who otherwise couldn't go to go on our current trip, so I'm very pleased about that.
Okay.
A quick question.
Yeah.
Did you get a chance to go back to the current, to the, to the current company that we, the current front end that we are using, and ask them if they would match it?
I can do that, and that's why I provided you with this in this comparison chart. Some of these companies I've learned to deal in, they're economies of scale, like one company wouldn't even entertain us, because we're not over 250 students.
Right.
I think, maybe that's Carousel, or maybe it was Close Up, one of them just flat-out wouldn't deal with us.
Because I think people were happy with the trip through World Strides.
Last year.
Yeah, last year's.
That's what we heard.
Yeah, that they were happy, and I think they also had guided tours through the museums.
Mm-hmm. So. So in some of these cases, you get a guided tour. Usually not through the Smithsonian's, but like if you go to the Capitol, you definitely get a guided tour, you go to the Rotunda.
So it's not through the vendor, it's through the museum itself?
It would depend on the museum. Typically, what happens, because I've gone, when I was a social department head in Lexington, I went, on the Washington DC trip. Bedford, they use World Strides, and what happens is the mini-goo land, because I flew when I was in Lexington, the mini-goo land, the tour guide from the company comes on, and there's two tour, depending on the number of buses you have, there's a tour guide from the company, and they narrate the whole experience.
Oh, okay.
For the students, when you're on the bus, this is what you're going to see, and turn to your left here, look there, you'll see this. So you get the whole feeling when you're on the buses, and then they get off, before you get off the bus, sometimes, like in the case of the Capitol, they had a guided tour, and the students had headphones on, so it was, it was definitely interactive. But it depends on what site students are sitting.
So you've done a lot of research on this, could you tease out what accounts for the difference? I mean, that's a big, the $500, whatever, $400 difference.
Well, transit, flying or driving.
No, but between World Strides and Capital Tours, those are both flying, right?
Yeah, I guess their business model.
So, but since. Wouldn't World Strides pick us up at Carlisle, wouldn't they transport us to and from the airports?
Yeah, so what, correct. So if you look at World Strides, what's encompassing, comping that is, it's a soup of nuts thing. They, they will pick us up, take us to the airport, fly us there, get us back, and get your kids back here, all for that price.
Turnkey.
Yeah. Capital Tours, basically, they start, it includes the airfare, but they start really once you hit the ground in a DC local airport, whether it's the Baltimore Airport, or Reagan, or wherever you may fly.
So World Strides flies with the kids?
Neither company flies with the children, except for the chaperones. One thing that's actually really advantageous is, Capital Tours, you get a 10 to 1 chaperone.
I saw that, too.
They're actually a full faculty to go.
Yeah.
Versus we have to pay out of pocket, right now, for World Strides, I think we have four chaperones that are provided.
Right, and they do that for the lower cost?
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Sometimes, and sometimes they'll start out, they offer all these perks to get this full trip sunk down, and then the price usually goes up the next year.
Uh-huh, it could be, too. Is it comparable hotels?
Um.
In locations of the hotels?
I can certainly find that out.
Because that might be a factor.
Yeah, and I think a lot of this depends on when you book. I know some of the museums are really hard to get tickets for, like they can book up like a year in advance. Holocaust Museum, maybe, especially, yeah.
And how long is this quote for Capital Tours good for? Does it have an expiration?
No, I mean, I just got the email last week, so I'm sure.
But the ballpark is better, anyway.
I like the ballpark a lot better.
Yeah. Are there any issues in terms of liability, in the sense that sort of, it seems like World Strides assumes responsibility for the kids, as soon as they get on the bus from here, until they get back?
The thing about, the thing about World Strides, that, I'm going to be honest with you, is a little concerning to me. If you flip to the second page, I do feel like you're nickel and dime, in terms of when you sign up, if there's a 10% late registration fee, if you pay in full, then there's a $6 processing fee, it does feel like.
Sneaky.
Yeah, so.
Sneaky.
Yeah, I guess you could say that.
And there were questions this year about the scholarship.
Yes, the student scholarship, and they have a very specific, like the AGI, I guess it was an $85,000, but then it only compensates, or provides for $400 off of a total amount but then it only compensates or provides for $400 off of a total amount of $1345, so.
Oh, so if, so if the family makes a donation to the scholarship, it's.
No, 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 that would be a scholarship to.
They have their own little scholarship.
That would be to, it's to the school, not to, it's not that World Strides, it's a side grant.
Correct, yes.
World Strides advertises that they have a scholarship fund themselves.
In addition.
But it's very.
But it's hard to.
It's very difficult to.
Yeah, great point, yeah, great point.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Well, just a question of what you were saying before, the total cost, there, there might be these smaller additional costs? Is that what you were saying about the second page or?
Uh, for World Strides, if you look at the second page, you can see the quote that's based on our current price. So it's $1345 currently for our eighth grade students to go. However, it gets pretty confusing. If they paid before a certain date, then it's less $70. If they had after a certain date, it's after. Yeah, so.
Okay.
It's like the fine print you need to read.
Whereas the other one, it's just, that's the fee, no matter when you pay it and you can have, there's a sign.
Well, they do have a deadline.
Deadline.
You do need to lock in the airfare and then the cost can go up and you can get the flight. Uh, but that's pretty much.
And that will be coming upon us to get that word out as soon as possible.
So the question I'm at is, I mean, can you afford taking a month and we vote next time? Or do you feel you need to greenlight it now so you can vote?
What I would like to do is to lock in the date. Because I do feel like having the DC trip right at the end of the year really adds to the end of year experience. If we can leverage some of the funds from the student account to offset the cost for everybody, I think that would be preferable. And as I said, I would love to, to see the number be under $1,000 per student. That being said, you can clearly see I'm more interested in one vendor than another. So I, I'm in a position that I can call Capital Tours tomorrow.
When do we have to, I mean, the longer we wait, we could potentially lose that.
I don't answer that, but I, I feel more comfortable with.
We should, I think he's asking for the flexibility.
Yeah, what's involved in locking in? We have to pay a deposit at school or?
I don't think so. I think we just have to approve, we just have to greenlight them. So the question is, do you want to waive the customary?
That's the question, if you want to.
You're the chair, that's what you.
But right now, we're just asking for the.
Dates.
We're just asking for the date, you can, the committee can approve the date.
But if, if he wants to lock something in, silly to have the date in that power.
Is the plan to lock something in prior to actually taking the DC trip?
I want to go on Washington DC trip, which I would be doing anyway.
So are you, I mean, to, to lock in that date, doesn't it sound like there's any risk to the school to do that, right?
There's no risk to the school. Because I haven't signed it, we haven't signed anything for one vendor versus another.
But if you lock in the date, do you presumably have to sign something?
No, it's just penciling in a date on really our calendar, not any others.
You don't need us to, you can do that anyway. You can do that anyway. If you need, where I thought you were going is if you want the freedom to negotiate now and they tell you that, because they always tell you that, right? Like the airfare is going up and this is.
Yeah, yeah, and I'm sure that's, that's kind of stronger employee on their part too.
So it sounds like you want to lock in the date.
I want to get the best deal for our families.
Yeah.
That's the bottom line.
And then you want to go on this trip? Bring back one, and you're, and you're going to bring, I'm kind of outlining the steps. And you're going to bring back the feedback to us and then.
Yeah.
Our June meeting is June 12th. We'd obviously need to talk about it then, it's a pretty cool meeting, but.
So I'm happy to share with you our experience.
Are you going to learn something that's going to change your mind between now and then?
Well, I also think that gives you time to plan what fundraising efforts you're going to do in the meantime. That was a question. And then, you know, we'd have a.
The question is, Melinda, are you going to learn something about fundraising or cost or vendor that will change your mind about who?
I, I could answer those questions right now. What the students did, I do think students should have some participation in raising funds for themselves to, to offset costs. So we did a car wash this year, as I said, it raised about $1,000. What was really an interesting model for fundraising was in seventh grade, they did a calendar with donations. That raised a decent amount of money too. So I looked at both of those options, just to generate funds.
All right, so then I just asked the committee, well, our usual process is to discuss something at one meeting and then we'd take the action item for voting at, at the subsequent meeting. But on some occasions, we waive our usual practice and we need a motion to do that from a community member to waive our usual practice of discussing at one meeting and voting at the next so that we could vote today.
I move to waive our usual practice of deliberating in one meeting and voting in the subsequent meeting for this purpose, to give Matt the, the administration the flexibility to negotiate and sign if needed. But with the provision that he will present at the June meeting his final deal and his fundraising plan.
Second, further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Matt, I'm going to be the, do you ever want to vote?
But now we have to vote to vote.
Oh, yeah.
Oh.
Now we need a motion to.
Next year, so.
We can talk.
So.
Now we need a vote, we need a motion.
That was just to waive our usual practice. All right, so do I have a motion? Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the June 2020 eighth grade trip as presented. Again, with the provision that Matt or somebody from the eighth grade team will come at the June meeting to present the final package, including a notional fundraising plan.
Second, further discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Was that, yeah.
Good work.
Thanks, Matt.
Okay. Solar project update and timeline. We've got a team from AmaraSCO here. I'll just introduce you to our school committee members, Evan Mustafi, David Modell, you guys know me, Jim O'Shea Superintendent, Christine Lear and Sarah Wilson. You guys want to introduce yourselves?
Rob Jackson, Director of Development.
Rob Pukowski, I'm an AmaraSCO employee, I'm a consultant for AmaraSCO.
What kind of consultant?
Civil and environmental.
Okay.
My life's project area.
Okay, do you guys want to come up here and, did you have the presentation?
Yeah, do you want me to put your slides up? Jonathan's.
And Jonathan DeCock is here from the Energy Task Force and Solar Lease Committee.
Actually, just the solar working group.
Solar working group. And Rob Fattato, our Facilities Director.
I think you gave Rob field promotion. Rob is the Field Facility Manager.
Manager.
Okay, Facilities Manager. All right.
He's getting all excited.
All right, so just to give a little bit of background, at the most recent town meeting, a solar bylaw change was approved to allow, to expand the solar overlay district to have. Allowed canopies, solar canopies in school properties. The town approved and gave the power to the Board of Selectmen and School Committee to enter into agreements for a solar project in the parking lot and at the transfer station. And the town also approved funding for paving of the parking lot in conjunction with the project. So AmaraSCO is ready to basically hit the ground running and talk about project timeline, right?
Absolutely, yeah. And I think, have you any, you have some slides?
Do we want to hit the lights a little bit? Thank you guys for coming.
Yeah.
Thanks for having us.
Uh, do you want to start from the beginning there or? I think everybody, maybe at this point, understands the layout. You know, Shanty, you want to talk about the size and?
I think the DC is about 620 DC rounds. Strut area, probably some of the biggest ones, four outer arrays. Seven final, give them AC.
We're going to ask you.
Shanty, can you speak up?
I know you're shy.
About a 620 DC array, I have a larger array over the bus drop-off area and some Y-configured canopies over, over the parking areas. So this has been basically the layout for, you know, the last few months. So not, not really any surprises here. Been here a few times and talked about this layout.
All right.
Okay.
So I guess before we talk about the bidding process, we should actually talk about the process.
So we've submitted that in good faith, we've submitted an interconnection application. We've gotten some positive feedback from Eversource. We don't have Trump comps yet, so those are still kind of uncertain between the two projects. But we had some equipment specifications and at this point, we, we don't want the project interconnection cost more than $225,000 at this point, per project. Otherwise, it's a challenge for us, which we believe it'll be less than that, but we won't know until we finally get the interconnection service agreement.
What happens if it's more than that?
Uh, with, the project does not work for us at this point.
And what are, do you have any compare, you know, compares, basis for comparison with other towns that have applied?
I think it's typical for solar projects, a lot of procurements, ground mounted arrays have assumed that, you know, $250,000 interconnect fee would be standard. This one's, you know, smaller, canopies are a different financial equation to the project. Canopies are, you know, the equipment's a little more expensive than as opposed to a ground mounted array. So the, the amount of interconnection costs that a canopy project can handle are less because the equipment costs more.
When will we know?
A couple of months, I believe, right?
Yeah, probably July.
What is an interconnect?
So that's where the, you know, the, the line from the solar panels delivers electrons to the grid.
And, and that's Eversource's job to do that.
Right.
They're aware of the constraints of the project.
They are, yes. We, we submitted a site layout and what we call a one-line diagram as part of the interconnection application, paid the fee. And where are we at at this point? I think they've approved the design.
We applied in April, so they will get back to us.
So you have a sort of a go-no-go in a month if, if for some reason they.
Right.
Correct your pricing.
And what was the equipment that the utility?
And fees and dollars.
So nothing, no direct transfer trip or?
No, I mean, they will only give it to us when they give us the ISA. So that's when you would know what the cost is.
And what is ISA?
Interconnection Service Agreement. So the, the two things that would, two pieces of equipment that would probably put it over $225 as a direct transfer trip or a VO. And either of those have been specked out on this project, so by the utility. So that, that's good news to start off.
How concerned are you though?
Uh, well, my engineering team is, is not, so therefore I'm not.
I like it. Okay.
Okay. Okay, so, uh, hoping to have DPA and lease agreement. Once we have those executed, we will authorize Wood and Rob Pukowski to begin the permitting process. We actually had a couple of phone calls with the planning board to kind of set things up for pre-application meeting and go over the two projects. We understand that there'll be separate site plan applications for either project and we're teaming that up at this point. Rob, do you want to talk about permitting? I'm sure we're all secure over.
So we have talked to the planning department and it's a three-week review for this. So in other words, we need to submit the site plan review application three weeks before the hearing. So given that, they only have one meeting in June. So what we're targeting, assuming everything gets ironed out, would be to submit near the end of June and beyond the July 15th hearing. We are scheduled to meet with the planning board Monday night as an informal informational session. So hopefully we can present the information to them, you know, give them a little bit of knowledge and the chance of maybe getting approval at that first public hearing.
And so once we get, you know, local permits, non-ministerial permits is what state calls them, and the interconnection service agreement, we can apply this project into the SMART program and get into their queue and to where end up?
That's where you get, that's where you get assigned a block number, right? So you need to have gone through site plan review.
Correct.
In order to apply to the SMART program.
Yes.
Okay, and then, how quickly do you usually hear back once you've applied?
It was for similar projects, it was a couple of months.
Couple of months to tell you a block or to see whether it's approved?
Yes, to, to approve, but the block numbers come probably within a week.
So Rob, you've made representations in the past. I think that if we're too low with block number, it would still also not be economically viable.
Well, it'd just be a different lease payment as we presented to the town. There's a scheduled lease payments that.
So there's not a no-go gate at that point? It just is what it is.
For us, I mean, the incentive.
For you, yeah.
This payment is diminishing as time goes on.
But what is, what, what was approved at town meeting? A certain threshold of lease payment or just to go ahead?
Just go ahead.
Just go ahead. We would think it was initially 22 was the lease payment.
I agree. I think Jonathan estimated three or four, block three or four, which is probably the best-case scenario.
Do you think it's still feasible?
That could be, it's dependent on when we get an interconnection service agreement. The queue, we have our analysts looking at the interconnection queue and who's ahead of us at this point. And if all those projects ahead of us got approved, we would, that would probably put us in block six or seven at this point. Now, it's not.
So it's not a time thing, it's just how many projects when they get to.
Right, it's just, they review each, if you have an ISA and you have all your permits, then they review those projects in order in which the applications have been submitted to the state, state's consultant.
And are there any reasons why the ones ahead of us would not get approved?
Potentially, I think there are some projects that, you know, have, are on some lines with congestion and some problems.
And it's up to Eversource or the power company to project. Okay, but it sounds optimistic then, three or four. Is that, Jonathan, is that your kind of read of things?
I don't know, we've been saying block three for quite a while and it varies depending on, you know, what, you know, the exact timing of all this is.
Right.
You know, the, the timing here is a bit longer than I think we expected from our previous discussions.
Right.
So that might push it down a little bit.
But this doesn't seem, from what Rob's saying, and this is news to me, but it, it doesn't seem as much time, I mean, ultimately it is time-driven, but the fact is, what's gating is you already have your interconnection proposal submitted, right? So executing the ISA, maybe that can be drawn in a little, but we're in a stack of ISAs, right? So regardless of when they approve it, you're kind of in that queue of ISAs.
Applications, not ISA. There's, there's a lot of applications in the queue.
Right.
When you get approved, you get the ISA and that's, and then there's another queue for the SMART approval.
Okay, but I guess, let me see if I can understand it. We're in the queue of the ISA, of the interconnection.
Application.
Application, so we're already in that queue.
Correct.
That queue will spit out a, a priority, if you will, in the ISA stack.
Right.
It doesn't matter what time, I mean, it matters eventually, but, right? It doesn't really matter if it's June or July, it will be based on when we submit it.
But we also have to clear the, the site plan review hurdle, it sounds like, before we can.
Right, but does that gate anything? I mean, I, if it does, then does, then that leads to the next question, which is, does the planning board, and I don't know who can speak, they're not here tonight, although Pete can come by, I guess, right? Do they have a sense of urgency about this? Like they have this meeting and you have to make this meeting, can't they have a meeting in between? Like, can't, do they have to, I realize.
For that, that free to prep.
Here for planning board, ask the questions.
Yeah, we've done it many days, that's a, probably could. Right.
There's some engineering design that needs to be done between whenever leases.
But, but you have a submit site plan June 24th. So that seems, given all the work you have to do, that doesn't seem like an unreasonable amount of time. That's, I'm guessing. But then, planning board meeting July 15th and planning board approval, I mean, there is a three-week block, I get that too, but, I mean, have they sharp, have they taken? It's kind of rhetorical without them here, but now, I was hoping somebody would be here so we could, I would ask the question of planning board, did you take a sharp pencil to your piece of it? Like, nobody should, nobody, like, I don't personally want like school committee to be delaying and I wouldn't want planning board. I understand, I can't, we can't do anything that Eversource and you have a pile of work you have to do, but where we can, we shouldn't, in my opinion, delay it because, oh, we only have a meeting once a month and our meeting is not till October.
No, 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 I don't think that's going to be. No, 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 I don't think that's going to be, that's not going to be the hurdle. So right now, the order of events is, you know, the lease agreement needs to be resolved, and the school committee received that yesterday, so we obviously, you know, wouldn't be taking a vote on that tonight, we're, we need a chance to review that, and we're going to discuss our process tonight for how we're going to, to approach that and execute the lease. So, but that, you know, we can discuss that timeline, it doesn't have to be a long timeline, if we're close. Then, you know, once that's executed, the design process needs to, you need to submit a final design for site plan review to commence, right? So you have design work to do, and how long does that take? How long are you expecting that to take?
Couple of weeks, once or?
Yeah, yeah, a couple of weeks. I mean, it's, it's fairly straightforward, these are, it's basically considered redevelopment projects, there shouldn't be any significant issues with stormwater. The planning department did say today that they often will engage a third-party reviewer, so another engineer, another consultant, because
Yes.
The town doesn't have their own engineering staff. Hopefully, we can bypass that, only because it's very straightforward.
Okay. We'll see what they say. That's up to them, but, yeah.
So are we, are we, as a school committee, pacing anything right now?
What's in our court right now is the lease, the review of the lease agreement.
So if we beavered away and did it quickly, does that help? Or are we still on this timeline for June 24th? We won't delay it, but can we speed it up?
No, but can we expedite any of this?
We have the draft agreements, we have lawyer's comments, so, I mean, I don't want to have that discussion.
Have you started the design work? I mean, it sounds like you're
Electrical is basically done, it's just
How close are you to that final design?
We have to do some field work, there's the wetlands delineation, there's some survey work.
Are you waiting for the lease to do that?
We are.
Exception.
There's no wetlands here.
You got exemption.
Yeah.
We have to, there's a potential jurisdictional waterway at the transfer station, and so that's probably independent of the school, but that, when I say wetlands, that would be the only part, I don't think there's any wetland concern.
No, there's none here, we still do have to do a survey, so, you know, that can begin, as I said, Rob wants the lease agreement in place, so we can turn the site plans around pretty quickly. When we talked to the planning department, it sounded like they canceled the second meeting in June because it was near the end of school, and some of the members may be away, I mean, I don't know if there's a way that they would consider making a, you know, we have heard of special meetings that they've rescheduled.
Good if they could.
So if that's an option, that's great, you know, anything we can do to get this in sooner.
When you talk about site plan, are we talking about the structures that we're going to put in there?
Right.
Because there were questions about the functionality of the bus canopy and the placement of those poles, and So once you have your design, you'll come back to us, and we'll be able to look at it and down it through the paces?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so then, my other question with regard to apply to the SMART program, so at that point in time, when you apply the SMART program, you get put into one of the boxes or?
The blocks.
The blocks, right? So then, once you're in the block, what occurs after that is, is up to?
It's up to us.
It's up to us, so the timeline, like, when we're looking at a timeline, it says mechanical completion in April, right? If we so decide, we could kick that down the road a little bit to June or July?
Yeah, that's pushing it at, you know, the very edge, I think we have like a year to build from when we get approval, so, and there are extensions.
Which approval?
You're taking building or you're
From the SMART approval.
Okay, so if we go in in August, September, yeah, that'd be perfect, like, start in June, July, August, and we can
Rob, approval, you said, is a couple of months after application?
Correct.
So we're looking at roughly October, November?
Probably, yeah.
How long did it take for block one to fill up?
It took a while, actually.
A while? Do you, do you get to see, is there like a meter for block two, does it show you? Like, everybody else
Block two is pretty much full at this point, we probably will get in the block two, yeah.
So, but do you see, like, is there some online?
It's probably the least, it's the queue that's not filling up the fastest, I guess. It's the queue that's filling up slowly, not the most slowly, I guess, and EverSource East, which is where Carli was. If you're talking about national grid, there's a two-year waiting list for projects. Womiko, I think it's full, Western Mass, so EverSource West, so we're in a good area, but it's probably the only area we can do a project in Massachusetts under SMART at this point.
And then, sorry, the year to complete is from, from approval is the year to build? Is the beginning of the building or the completion of the building?
It is the COB date, so the completion of the building.
So, can I ask, hands on the ground, when you start right here in the parking lot to when you're done, how long do you think that takes?
Two months.
With the coordination of the paving? Okay, so let's, why don't we, why don't we talk about that? Because presuming we get the lease agreement negotiated, finalized soon, and we go through site plan review, and we hit these target dates, why don't you talk about the construction?
Okay. So, at this point, when we get SMART approval, you know, I think we'd be looking at whoring panels, and that's the longest lead on an equipment, and that is taking about six months with SunPower at this point, so
I didn't know about that.
Yeah.
I didn't realize that.
Yeah, it's, it's, the glut is gone in the market.
It puts us out into December.
There is a high demand for panels. The panel market is, changes by the day. We deal with it, we have to take risks on it quite a bit, it's, it's kind of, it's kind of like gas prices, you know, it's a global commodity, really, and we have to deal with that.
So that's going to be baked into the year, so
Yes.
You could do it in two months, but you're going to wait for the panels.
And they're the only, SunPower are the only panel people you use? You use one bed?
Well, we determined that SunPower was the only one that was going to work for this project.
This is the big argument we had at town hall.
We, yeah, it sounds like
People accusing us of leeching
No, no, it sounds like it's a great product, and it's
It's the best.
So we want to go with that, that's
Okay, and so they're at high demand, obviously, in that six months?
They are.
Okay, so really, you say you couldn't construct until the winter anyway?
Yeah, and early Ordinate the paving project, obviously, probably want to do it in the warmer months, so maybe in the spring.
So it sounds like what we want to do is, you know, as quickly as possible, move through these steps that can get us into the SMART program.
Yes.
And then, once we're there, you know, we're waiting for procuring the equipment, and then we're going to schedule the construction at the time when it's
Most favorable.
When it's most
Well, you can't, Rob, do you want to speak to paving calendar in terms of what time of year, so, what's the earliest in the
I mean, you're looking at probably, if the timeline is, thinking about site mobilization in February, you could do the prep part of the paving work, then, but like Jim was saying, if you wanted to, it's not usually push it to like the end of school year next year, and then probably we find some paving, but no, we probably wouldn't be doing any paving before people
No, and even April, I would question physically.
Yeah, if you want to be like
All right, I have the planning board chair calling in, I'm going to put him on speaker. Hi, Pete, you're on speakerphone?
Okay, hey.
Amoresco's here, they're, we're talking about the timeline for the project, and there were a few questions that came up that might have been appropriate for the planning board, so we're just, if you don't mind spending a few minutes with us here?
Sure, I don't mind.
Oh, thank you. I don't know, it's not a good place for this.
It doesn't
All right. So, so I guess, getting back to the paving, I think we can talk about the details of the steps, but when you say the prep work can be done during February, because my understanding is that paving is really not supposed to be done in cold months.
Paving, you don't want to do until it is a lease, like, the reason of continuously.
Right, but what, so what kind of prep work?
Well, the prep work, we get to grind down the existing lot ahead of time, ahead of them coming in to do their trenching, to do their pole installation.
Who's grinding?
Grinding down the lot makes it unusable for parking.
Yeah, this is, this is all best done June 15th and 14th.
So let's, while Pete's on the phone, why don't we, let's just table paving for a minute.
Yeah, all right, so we have some questions about site plan review.
Sure.
And we're talking about the steps for, the next steps. Next steps, after the lease is executed, Amoresco wants to move directly to the site plan review, they're going to be doing their engineering design, they have a preliminary meeting set up tomorrow, planning board, to talk, talk about site plan review, the application process. So the question was, we're eager to move this process along as quickly as possible because our application to the SMART program depends on, you know, how quickly we can get into block, to whatever block is filling up now or next.
Right.
Right, so, and we noticed that the planning board has a sparse meeting schedule over the summer, and the question was whether it would be possible to have a special meeting or if the hearing is continued, to have that be, you know, sometime in between the regularly scheduled June meeting. I know that's, you probably can't answer that without, you know, you have to talk to the committee, but what's the likelihood of that, you know, being, being doable?
We're fairly flexible with our summer schedule. As far as I know, it is not filling up, so we might not need to insert a meeting, we might be able to move a meeting around, so instead of, you know, instead of waiting three or four weeks between meetings, we could have one in two weeks instead, so we can bring that up tonight. But I will say, the best thing that we could do is work, have Amoresco work closely with George, I know we have the pre-meeting tomorrow, which is great, work closely with George to get the site design submitted to us early, have George distribute it to the planning board with plenty of time to review. So in other words, like, we kind of tell everybody, hey, we sent packets out on Friday, that doesn't give the planning board some time, members sometimes too much time to review it. If, if we can get that site design in like two weeks before the meeting, or the first meeting, the first public hearing, then we can have the individuals' members be reviewing it much prior to the call and try to move things along in that, in that first public hearing. You know, that, that would be the best thing that I can commit to. Right now, the only other thing I can say is that we can try to be flexible with the placement of the meetings in the summer. I'm just not sure what that will entail yet, until I know more about when, when they're going to submit the, the site plan review, and when that first public hearing is.
Okay, yeah, just, I know you said a couple of weeks, but it's a two-week notice period, so it's probably what George was saying, three weeks before the hearing.
Yeah, three weeks. It's definitely three weeks out, you know, from, from it because of the public notice.
Right. Okay.
And we need to get, move that along fairly quick, because then if you wait till summer, the mosquito doesn't publish every week.
It's got to be
And
Oh, there's certain weeks they don't publish, right?
Yeah.
Do you know what those are, Cynthia? Which weeks that they don't publish? Cynthia's here, so she might know.
Oh, okay.
No idea.
Okay, and then Jonathan, you were asking
I just need to know, how many meetings does the planning board need to have before they can officially sign off?
Well, I mean, technically, we need one meeting, right? But if there's open questions and things, and, you know, the tighter the design is, with the less variables, the quicker we can sign off, right? There's nothing, there's, there is a maximum time we can take, but there is no minimum required time that, that we can take to sign off on something, so it's really just making sure that, that all the conditions and everything that we're going to see are met, and that's why I think during this, a couple of week, you know, posting, the closer you guys can work with George and, and the staff and me, then the better we'll be prepared to try to, to try to cure this out in a fewer number of meetings.
Right, so Pete, do you recommend that, once the design is submitted to planning board members, that Amoresco could even talk to members, you know, ahead of time to find out what questions they might have before the meeting?
Yeah, I mean, I, I obviously can't, you know what I mean, because of all my stuff, but if Amoresco wants to reach out to a few key members of the board and make sure that they don't have problems with it, that is definitely something that I would, you know, that they can do, yeah. I don't want to say I recommend it, but, but I, they can do that, you know, without, without issue.
Right, okay. All right, so I hear you saying that, you know, in best-case scenario, you know, you could have one hearing and close it, if there's outstanding issues or questions that need to be addressed, then the hearing would be continued, and you think that the planning board might have some flexibility to schedule the meetings closer in time if necessary?
But there's a, if a, if a hearing is continued, it's automatically three weeks delayed, right?
I don't think so, once the hearing is, once the hearing is then noticed, it can continue, it's not, it doesn't
It can continue
Yeah, yeah, we don't, we don't have to re-notice for every continuation.
I see, okay.
We, we can do it in the next meeting, you know what I mean?
Okay. All right, so, do we have other questions for Pete?
I don't thi, I mean, Pete, you're well aware of this stuff, I'm just emphasizing, let's say, that, that we're, at least as Rob described it just before you got on, we're in a, we're in a somewhat deep queue, let's say, with EverSource on the ISA, and the faster we can get, you know, all the parts done, the better chance we have at a decent block assignment, and I'm sure you're well aware of that, so.
Yeah, I'm well aware of that. I kind of, you know, definitely, we, we would have entertained a site plan review weeks ago, because we got okay from town council to do that, but the sooner you guys get it submitted and get that, the public hearing scheduled, then we will try to move on it as quick as possible.
On that last comment where town council said okay, he said okay in advance of a town meeting that approved it?
Yeah, yeah, he did, he, yeah, I, I would, yes, he most definitely did.
It was questionable, though, it was, you could do it, but if anyone, if any of your butters were to raise issues and to sue the town over it, then it would be difficult.
Okay, so it was not
Yeah, the main details is that we couldn't have closed the hearing prior to, prior to
Town meeting.
The town meeting.
But also, I mean, I don't want to speak for Amoresco, but I'm assuming he would have had to go at risk on a lot of work, and why would you do that, right? So, okay, so
We've done some.
Right, no, I understand, but to actually submit a definitive site plan, there's a lot of work, if you don't have a meeting, and I don't know if you were there, but there's lots of, it ended up passing overwhelmingly, but not before, you know, taking two hours out of everybody's life.
So, just to summarize, you know, what I think I heard as the critical path is, the school committee needs to sign the lease, which gives you the right to go in and do the surveys, correct?
And the PPA as well.
Right, the PPA, the board of selectmen does that.
Well, do we sign the PPA?
Just so you guys know, the board of selectmen also needs to approve the lease, so there's some interaction there with you signing it, right? You guys sign it, the board of selectmen has to approve it, too, okay? So you guys need to sign the lease, that gives them the right to get out here and do the survey, which blocks them from doing the site plan, right? We then have three weeks to, of public, or to get things started. Once site plan review is approved, then they can apply for SMART block.
With interconnection services.
Right, ISA is also in there, but we're assuming that, I'm assuming the critical path comes through the town now rather than through the ISA, but I could be wrong, we might find at the end of the critical path on the town that EverSource is still, you know, doing whatever they do.
Right.
So that's our critical path, I think, to get to the SMART block, which is what controls the finances for the town, right? And so, if we get in block three, then the lease is $22,000 for the school, the, I think the pilot is $11,000 and change, and then whatever's at the transfer station.
So, Jonathan?
So, so I think that's our critical path right now, so I think that's what we need to look at, and then, I completely agree, this is longer than I was expecting, but I think we should be looking at what happens if we actually do the construction next summer.
But, so let's, I, that's very helpful, and I guess, what would be useful, and I don't know if you're the guy to do it, but I think, taking this chart, and, and this is more of a town thing than maybe, the, Amoresco put this together as a, I think, you know, with your understanding of how the projects work, but I think what we really need is this critical path flow that you have, and what action, like, who has to take what action?
Right, who has to take what action?
Like, on one piece of paper, that everybody says, okay, this is our action, we have to do this.
Yeah.
That's my recommendation, and then, you know, the heads of the various boards can maybe get together on that piece of paper and say, all right.
Right.
You know, for Melinda, yes, we're going to commit to[1734.88] going to commit to...
Right, we know what ours is for right now, so, but yeah, that would definitely be helpful, update this with, you know, action and who is responsible, and target date for completion, so, with that, do you want, do you have more to present before we talk about the lease?
Yeah, let's...
All right, do, do we still need Pete?
No, I don't think so. Thank you, Pete.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks, bye.
So, when we provided kind of our offer to combine the paving and the solar projects, we worked with a EPC contractor to kind of work those costs out, and, you know, there were efficiencies with doing it, you know, under one roof, and, you know, and the town elected to do the paving on, on its own, which is fine, it's just, we still have to coordinate the projects in the same way that we were planning on doing it, and, so basically, Shanty, you want to, or you guys want to talk about this?
Sure. So, Mike, I'm PM for the project, or the future project, if this comes along, the paving process. So, Amaresco is going to have eight different trades on-site during the construction, so the more paving we can do up front before we mobilize to install the canopies themselves, the better off we are. The subs that we reached out to recommended paving this summer, if we want to try to break apart, having everybody in the same location at the same time, scraping the pavement this summer in the parking lot, putting down a one-and-a-half-inch binder, which is an extra half-inch on top, and then leaving that for the winter. And then, coming back in the spring, Amaresco would install the foundations underground conduit.
When you say spring, when would that be?
Either April vacation, or the start, or the end of June during...
So you would expect to be able to do all the trenching in a week? They could do that?
It's aggressive, but if we need to get it in in April, our preference would be to do it in June after school's out, but we can have to do it in, in April, if that makes sense. We can start putting foundations in in order to expedite the schedule during June if people don't get out.
Couldn't it be, is there some way to do that that's minimally disruptive to the operations, to the, and to the parking lot use, or no, there's no way to do that, no? All right.
Why does one, I mean, if, if I understand correctly, so we get our block, so once we have our block, we have it, and we have a year to finish, and we're not going to get the block till the fall anyway, so why would we squeeze, what's the compelling argument to do anything in April? Why don't we just do it in the summer?
Because I only, well, I, Amaresco and the paving coordination has from June X, say June 20 to August 20, which is not a lot of time to complete the amount of work that's all in one area.
Ah, okay, so you're saying do some of it in April, and then you finish in...
Just to try to spread it out, try to get as much done as possible, so that we're not jammed up against the start of the school year. Because I need to get out so that you guys can go in and finish paving.
What's, so, what's your total elapsed time from step two to step six, I guess?
Well, so our recommendation would be to have Carlisle go in this summer, strip the pavement, put down a one-and-a-half-inch binder, which is only half paving it, and then Amaresco would come in, complete their work next summer, and then at the end of the summer, Carlisle would come in and put down the top coat, which is the final pavement. And a one-and-a-half-inch binder should be sufficient to last throughout the winter, and then you put the, put the top coat down, which will allow Amaresco to drag around cranes, gallo machines in and out, and any damage that is incurred to the parking lot will then be covered up by the top coat. Otherwise, you go for the full pave this summer, Amaresco has a saw cut through the new pavement, and we're going to be putting three-inch trenches through the entire parking lot.
No, I, I don't disagree with what you're saying, like, maybe I didn't click, maybe I wasn't clear. Get that, saying, we go ahead, we do the binder job this summer, now you, that's what I said, you have two months, why would you do something in April of '20 instead of just waiting till right at June of '20 and get the, you're saying you don't think you can get it all done between June 20 and August, whatever?
If there's an opportunity to do it in April break, we'd like to take it, so we're, we're a year away from this project, so I can't give you a solid schedule. But the, I think there's three dozen foundations here, and we can do about four or five a day, depending on foundations.
Oh, I see, so it's start on it.
And I don't have a foundation design yet, so they could be anywhere from 12 feet to 24 feet deep, and however deep I need to, you know, gets, gets involved, and I have to understand how long it's going to take me to be put in, et cetera, the more time I need in April break.
Okay.
And the one-and-a-half-inch paving is going to be enough to take a whole academic year's worth of buses up and down, up and down.
What, Rob, can you weigh in on this too?
I'd be concerned with the plowing part of it, the water thing, you know, if we have to have, you know, manhole covers erased, over on both the parking lot, things like that, that'd be kind of cumbersome.
Do we have drains and things in that lot?
Yes.
What's that?
We have drains and, in the lot.
Catch basins?
Catch basins, yes, okay.
And how many manhole covers are there? Do you know off the top of your head, just...
Forty-eight.
Yeah, forty-eight.
So that's a challenge, yeah, that's a challenge.
It's all going to be a balance. And we'll go with something that will get closer and closer together and figure out the best strategy, but just topically, from, you know, really high-level view, that would make sense for us to try to, Amaresco the most amount of time possible, summer 2020.
Okay, but, but, which I think we agree on that, I guess, it's, it's the interim steps that lead to that are the problematic ones. So if, if we said to you, Mike, okay, we need to be done by August 27, 2020, right, someday, what day do we have to start? If you're going to do it continuously, no April, this and that, just the day you come in with your trucks and you just do through, is that three months? Is that two and a half months? You have a general sense for it?
It's going to be the day that you leave school.
No, no, forget the leaving school part, I'm saying, give us, give us a calendar date, I want to make, I mean, I'm saying in this notional model that the day that, the day in August of '20 that kids come back to school, done, 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 no.
So if we, if we're done August 20...
Where do we have to start? It might be May, I mean, maybe it's the beginning of June, I mean, I'm saying if there's an accommodation, it might be...
How long would the project take from start to finish?
About two months.
Two months, all right.
So here, it could be...
Drive a little bit buses, so they can come in on the lot and park.
Yeah, so if you start on June 20, August 20.
We're going to be out, our goal is to be out before students come back September, no matter what.
We might have to, the last week of school or something, pave, pave, and they have to park somewhere else, but that's okay, that's at the end.
Yeah, like, we can deal with a week or two.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
March, April, May, we can't do it.
No, 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 that's what I'm saying, it doesn't make sense, so I think rather than, so I, I guess that's where I'm leading to, Rob, is if, you bring up good points, if we don't put the binder down, just leave it alone, start in, you know, end of May, I'm just going to say, end of May, you're, you're scraping and doing whatever, they come in as soon as you're ready, and we have to deal with three weeks of parking and figuring it out the other place. But it, I, to me, and I think Jim seems to agree, dealing with the end of school when the weather's, you know, and just, is better than having a mess when you come in at the beginning of the fall.
So, okay, and the other question that I had about this is, it says, and these are kind of, seem like they're out of order to me, mobilize cranes, install canopies, complete the project, and then pave the top coat. I was understanding it to be the opposite, pave the top coat, then put the canopies up.
They got to put some, they got to bring in some heavy equipment, the cranes to put the canopies on top, so, you know, they're kind of, you're running heavy equipment on pavement, and if it's a new top coat...
We don't want to damage it, right.
You guys talked to Sunshine David, and the vendor that we ended up selecting for this.
Okay.
Because I think we would need them to weigh in on exactly what you're asking, right? If they want to be working underneath the canopies, right? Because it is, it could be the straight-up, right, the heavy equipment on top of the final coat versus needing underneath the canopies.
All right, that's something we can discuss when we get closer to having to make a choice about that, right? So I think, I think the most important thing to do now is for us to identify the process that we're going to use to review and approve the lease agreement, right? Is there anything else that you guys wanted to present in the meantime, before we start that discussion, or?
Just one, last quick question, the project on the parking lot, is it going to be running independently of, from the project at the transfer station, so, or it's going to be coordinated with the transfer station in terms of, you guys are going to be cutting our parking lot, and then the crew is going to be doing this at the same time, or...
Probably to the DPW first, depending on how site, site...
Or we're going to get our priority?
But that also is not dependent on school being outdoor.
Right, yeah, I guess, do they end up ending projects?
They have more, they can do whatever.
As far as, generally, they end up ending projects, so whatever happens, happens, excluding site plan review.
Both projects have to happen, but...
Right. They're not tied together by any logistical issues or...
But they are tied together in terms of the one-year completion, because they are both under the SMART, so they have the same draw.
Deadline.
Assuming that we get, you know, approvals for each, basically, at the same time.
Although, it would be okay for us to be in different SMART blocks if that didn't come in, right? You could have one SMART block for the school and a different SMART block for the transfer station.
But is your ICA, whatever it's called?
ISA.
ISA, is that, is it one ISA application or two?
No, it's two, and I expect the school to come first.
It's already bifurcated, okay.
Okay.
And I do expect the transfer station to be more difficult for them to get through in site plan review.
Because of weapons?
Well, yeah, there's weapons involved.
And butters?
Most of the butters are pretty happy, I think, so...
Are we talking about the transfer station?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I just, I, it would not surprise me if we get full sign-off at the school on this timeline, or even earlier if we can pull it off, and the transfer station is delayed some, just based on how the town works.
Okay, other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming, appreciate you.
All right, so, yeah, so I think, as I was thinking about this, there seems like there are a couple of different possibilities about how we can handle the review and the approval of the lease. Everyone has now received the, you know, the copies of the agreement, right? So you could review it, and we can make a plan to have edits, you could just submit your edits to me, or your comments, or questions and comments to me by a certain date, say May 13th or something, that would give us some time to communicate those to the attorney, and then we could either plan to vote at our next meeting on June 12, or we could plan to hold a special meeting in between if we, do we want to expedite this? If we choose that we want to do that, then yeah.
I'm just curious, so they have a go-no-go number with the ISA, right?
That's what it sounds like, yeah.
Does the town have a go-no-go number with the lease payment?
I mean, like, depending, there's no way to do it, because we don't know what block we're in, right?
I understand why you're asking, but...
You can't go up to three first, and then we find out what block.
Yeah, so I think that that's, it's just...
That's your sale, right?
To do it sooner, but like, we could, you could look at 50% reduction in your...
It's less, it's less. You're not, you're not going to like, to the Bahamas with that money.
No, I was asking for the town, the town has...
I understand your question.
It's the Supremate Retirement, like, you know.
All right, so first option is that we could follow this process where we submit edits or comments, and I'll funnel them back to the lawyer, and we can plan to have a special meeting, May 17th or something, you know, in between, before our next meeting, to vote on approval of the lease, or we could wait till the June 12 meeting.
It doesn't sound like, it sounds problematic if we wait till June, because stuff has to happen, so...
Because they can't start the survey work.
I think, I think, I think we never, like, two comments that I'd like to make, one is, I don't think we should ever try to be the lumpole in the tent, there's lots of complicated things to do, we have control of our schedules, we ought to make it happen. The other comment is, and I don't think everybody got every email, but our own town council is, and a particular lawyer at our town council's firm has been working those documents, right? So we don't need to be lawyers, right? There's a lawyer to look at.
Right, our, our town council is prepared.
And the solar working group is also ready to, to do some of the industry.
Right, yeah, so we have some experienced people on our solar working group committee that have also been providing input into the lease agreement, so by the time it gets to us, I mean, it should be pretty well, you know, pretty solid, is what I'm saying. So, we just, we do need a review period, if the committee would agree to have a special meeting for the purpose of approving it on a sooner timeline than our next meeting, that would be great.
Do you have to give notice how long?
You're always supposed to mean 48?
Forty-eight hours, forty-eight business hours.
Well, we could pick it, I mean, depends on how quickly you think. You've identified, Melinda, some issues with the attorney. Do you feel like those will get resolved and they don't need to be brought up here?
I think so, you see, everything there, it's basically comes down to one or two sentences that, so it's not, you know, it just, basically, and I, you heard them tonight talk about the fact that they do plan to repair anything that they, so that's what it came down to, you know, they're...
Right. So is your feeling then that the documents, the draft documents that have been circulated are sufficient for us to look at, and we could go ahead and pick a day to deliberate about them and vote them, or is there one more iteration based on these comments that we should wait for as a committee?
Yeah, what I think will, the process will be is we'll submit our comments, and I think, are there still comments going from the solar working group? I saw one today, as far as this.
Yes, there's still comments from the solar working group, the Board of Selectmen may have comments.
So what's the timeline of all that stuff?
So the Board of Selectmen are expecting to, based on what I heard from various employees in the town hall, I believe the Board of Selectmen are planning to execute the lease, or approve the lease for the school on the May 14 meeting that they have. However, I don't know that they have read it yet, because I just got it today, yesterday?
Yesterday, we did.
They have a new committee member as well.
So if, if they have any questions or comments, then that will have to go back as well.
Prior to their meeting on the 14th, as far as you understand?
Yeah, hopefully, I don't know that they know that.
Okay. But, so the 14th is next Tuesday.
Can I make my point?
Do we, should, do we need to meet in advance of, or after?
The best thing, I think, is for you guys to meet after the Board of Selectmen, because the way the specific town meeting was worded, it's the Board of Selectmen need to approve the lease, and the school committee needs to sign it, so it sounded to me like there was a serial operation there, the Board of Selectmen first, and then you guys can actually sign. I did ask town council that question, and didn't get a very definitive answer back yet on whether you can sign it provisionally on Board of Selectmen. But to be safe, it's best for you to, to do it after the Board of Selectmen have said this is the good lease.
So I have to ask Cynthia a procedural question.
My question.
What Melinda's sort of suggesting is individuals send her comments.
To.
On the lease.
Comments, no. To who?
To me, you know.
Well, to her as chair, and she would send them on.
To the lawyer.
That's not strictly speaking deliberation, but it's sort of...
Well, if they're just, if they're just consent to her, and she's not going back and forth at all...
No, not back and forth, but she would move, turn them over to council.
The purpose would be for me to aggregate all of the feedback and give it to the lawyer at once.
Understood, but she's not then turning it back over to Hugh, she's going to go...
No, she'll go on with it, and then we would get, so our feedback, if you will, would be heard that way, not deliberated, but, you know, just given and conduit to the attorney.
That's fine, as long as there's no going back.
No, no going back till we, so then, part B of my question, so that happens, that gets fed into the mix with, you know, Board of Selectmen, who knows who, task force, all those comments get funneled through the attorney, there's whatever negotiation, as Jonathan's outlining it, however those turn out, whether they're accepted, rejected, modified, ends up in a document that Selectmen then vote to approve in their meeting, and then we get that document back. We, we haven't deliberated, we indirectly, our comments got in there, and then we got a document out on which we will vote in an open meeting.
It's not legit.
Is that okay?
I can see where you might make a mistake, and it's left to me to say, send it back to one or more, if you have a check, is this really what you meant?
No, I only mean that the circuitous route of, not, another way is to have an open meeting, everybody brings all their comments, we say this and that, and everybody, and then, the open meeting comments are then delivered to...
Or, or each of you individually can go direct to town council without going through Melinda.
Oh, yeah, there's that too.
So...
It's not the through Melinda part.
It's not, it's not, it's not anybody.
Yeah, it's not the through Melinda part, I think that's an issue, it's the...
It's the coming back.
It's the coming back as a document later, I don't want us to find out that we did something.
Well, if the document comes back to you, it should be an open meeting?
Oh, it will, when the document comes back, it will be open meeting.
Yeah, I think it'd be fine.
Okay, all right, then I think what you say is fine.
Okay.
If, if, I guess you'd want to get those comments in by, like, the end of this week.
I would, I think, you know, if everybody has it and they have time and they're scheduled to review it this week, that would be great. People want to do that on, you know, the weekend, I could do Monday at the latest, but...
So you want it Monday?
Is it?
Well, it's got to get Tuesday is the selectman.
Whatever we can do to expedite this.
Well, our selectmen, they have to weigh in on a final, right, there has to be some turnaround timeline.
Right, and so that's, is the 14th next?
Yeah, I mean, are they really going to be able to turn it by then?
So, I mean, can you, can, do you guys want to get me comments by Friday, the 10th? That's two days away.
It's okay with me.
Okay.
It's okay, I can do that.
Okay.
And I would say this, make sure that even if you don't have comments, you send Melinda the note that says, "I don't have any comments," so she's not looking for us.
Right.
Okay, that'd be great, yeah, thank you.
So, well, now we get to another thing, which is, it's, in my opinion, highly likely that they won't have a finished product by next Tuesday, that seems aggressive, given what I know about board of selectmen and the legal process.
Because they're new too.
Do you want to do a provisional meeting, and if everything works out, you have a meeting on the week following, or do you want to just...
Well, we can...
So I'm looking at May 17th, that's Friday, if the, if the board of selectmen meets on Tuesday and everything seems okay, then we have time to notice a meeting for Friday.
What time Friday?
Why don't you notice it now, Wednesday or Thursday?
Or notice it now, and then if we don't, if we have to postpone it, we postpone it.
That's probably the best.
You can do that too. All right, so when do people, do people have time next week?
Sure.
Wednesday?
Do you think it's a daytime meeting or a nighttime? Should be a fast meeting.
It should be. Or what do people think, unflexible?
Daytime meetings.
I know.
Yeah, I'm okay.
Daytime meeting okay for you?
Is a daytime meeting okay for you?
On the morning.
That's my key moment.
This is going to be short that week.
It's not good at all.
It'll be short.
Yeah, but I think you'll be fine without me, you'll have a more, I mean, I'll come if I can, but I just can't make any promises.
Right, understood. Do you have daytime availability next week?
I do.
Okay, so how about Wednesday at 8:30 in the morning?
8:00 AM?
8:30 AM, is that too early?
I can't do it.
Okay.
We have a new student tuition system all next Tuesday.
Oh, damn.
Friday all day, I can do it like at 4:00 or 3:30 on any of those.
Yeah, that's right.
I mean, do you want me there?
You don't have to be there.
We can, we can. Someone else could be the recording secretary for the day.
Tell me what topic, Nancy, so we can have someone else do the...
As long as people speak in short sentences, I can probably...
No long ones. It's not the length of the sentence, it's the length of the words.
Yeah, short words, too.
Okay, so then if the board of selectmen doesn't approve it, you just cancel the meeting?
Yeah.
So you will post it for...
Do you say?
I'd say...
Wednesday or Wednesday?
I'd say 8:30 and, and then, little room over there?
It's on March 8.
Wednesday, 8:30, okay.
Melinda, do you want me to call Minuteman Network, is that the right word? You want recording?
Yeah, that's true.
No.
I think that we're going to do it in a small room, and I think, okay, it's a lease negotiation, so, I mean, yep, it's fine.
We'll post it, we'll post it, but...
We're not required to tell, ladies, we just do it voluntarily.
No, I know, but I'm just wondering if we want it.
All right, great, so everybody will get their comments to me by Friday, and we have, we'll post a meeting for, and we'll watch the board of selectmen do on Tuesday before.
And if they don't vote, then we will figure, I guess a question for the selectmen that we should probably, you know, check in with them is, will they be similarly flexible, in other words, if they don't manage to finish it, if it's not ready for the 14th, does it have to wait for the 28th, or are they willing to pop a meeting in there?
Yeah, in fact, I think based on this discussion, what I'll do is I'll send a note out to Tim Goddard, and ask him to, for the selectmen, for the possibility of this kind of stuff.
Right, good, because we all agree we should get, okay, I think that's great, thank you.
Thanks for your help with that.
Yep.
All right, so anything else on the solar project? We can move on.
Melinda, you just clarified, so I have to do an agenda for that, so the agenda discussion item will be to vote on the lease?
Solar lease discussion and vote.
Okay.
And sign, right, vote in time or sign?
Oh, yeah.
We don't have to, we don't have to, I mean, vote.
Well, we don't, I mean, signing is...
We can execute it, you know.
If you vote, you can sign.
Any day, yeah.
That's right.
Whenever the final version is presented to us, we can sign it after we've had a vote. All right, thank you for coming?
Thanks, Jonathan.
Thanks.
I think we're good?
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Carla Education Foundation's spring grants.
Thank you. Hi.
Hi, thank you for waiting.
Sorry.
Can you just identify yourselves?
Jill Acosta, for the Carla Education Foundation. So, CEF received five grant proposals this spring, reviewed all the grants at our April 25th board meeting, and committed to funding four grant requests for a total of $8,972.36. So, grants that we accepted, the first one was promoting positivity in school, it was motivational signage in an artist and residence program, and Matt and Dennis submitted this request. The school will welcome artist Brent Badland next week to work with the kids to create art that reflects the ideas and character of our school and community. This art will be installed in the stairwell leading to the gym and performing art studio. Additionally, the principals will purchase positive signage to put around the school. The goal is to reinforce our culture of continuous learning, positivity, and inclusion while deepening the students' social and emotional learning. So that was the first one.
Great.
The next one was Rocket Notebooks for the eighth graders, and this was for Anne Spiegel, and it was $1,686.40. The CEF is funding the purchase of 75 Rocket Notebooks and accessories to help the rising eighth graders to go paperless next year. The Rocket Books are an interesting use of technology in that kids do their work on paper, but they utilize the reusable and QR-coded notebook pages that help them get their work to the teacher and their own files in an orderly and efficient manner. Use of the Rocket Books is a great move in the paperless direction and conservation of resources. Furthermore, they help kids with executive functioning and organizational support.
That was an awesome, awesome, awesome idea.
Still using it?
No, because I don't have to take notes, but...
Did you ever use a Rocket Notebook?
Yeah. So what it is basically, is it's a notebook, it looks like a notebook, but the pages are sort of plasticky, so the kids write them with a specific kind of pen, and then they can take a picture of it with their iPad, and it'll be filed where it's indicated to file, and then they take a wet cloth and they wipe the page off and they start again.
Huh.
It's amazing.
It's pretty good.
See, does their work somewhere so they can refer to it later?
And they, when it pops up, it gives them all these options of like, of, does this go to your teacher, does this go, which file more, send this to?
Okay.
And so it's got its own drive, basically, built in through that QR code.
How's the two sizes, is it a smaller or the bigger version?
It's the bigger version.
The bigger versions.
Notebook size version.
Okay, that sounds pretty cool.
And they're planning to use them in three of the classes, they're planning to use them in social studies, language arts, and math.
That's awesome.
Wow.
Yeah, my fifth grader, he saw his backpack. He needs one of these, but, okay, so the third one was Sensory Pathways, Sue Ross and April Coulson, that submitted a request, it was approved for $1,298.96. Sue Ross and April Coulson will work over the summer to create sensory pathway stickers through the use of a new cricket machine. The grant covers purchase of machine, training sessions for the teachers on how to use it, consultation with a graphic artist on creating their specific pathways and design, creation and installation of pathways, and creation and installation of pathways in the school. This is following on the success of the sensory pathway project already in place, which we believe promotes innovation by changing the nature of the transition kids go through every day.
Hmm, interesting.
And the last one was Public Policy Institute Conference, Building Capacity for Safe and Successful Schools. Jeff Heckman.
Yeah, can you read that one again? What's the title?
Mr. Heck.
Mr. Heck, well, the title is as long as his name.
No, the, can you read what the conference is?
It's Building Capacity for Safe and Successful Schools. So it basically is, Jeff will attend this Washington DC-based conference in July to learn about moves and trends in policy and practices in regards to ensuring the safety of successful schools. For the, from this conference, he will learn not only what policies the school is obligated to have in place, but also which practices the schools should have in place in order to ensure opportunity and accessibility for all students. From this conference, he believes he will be more effective in his advocacy for the students, his ability to anticipate the coming needs, challenges, and opportunities awaiting CPS in the near future, and his ability to support the teachers and the administrators, and that's for $1,287.
Does it happen to say the date of the conference?
Oh, we have it, Joe, it's around July 15th-ish, I think the 15th or the 17th or something like that, but I can get that for you.
I could pull up if you'd, if you want to know these exact things.
Later, it's okay.
I have a copy of those too, it's for just to write up at some point.
What was that?
Can I get a copy?
Sure, sure, yes.
Yeah, I'll send that to you just then.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
It's very exciting.
Do we need to approve them or accept them with gratitude?
You have to vote to accept them.
And I, I have to abstain from this, I believe.
Because she's on...
You're still on C, yeah?
I am.
All right, so would you like us to vote today?
Sure.
Somebody make a motion to waive our usual practice of discussing?
I move to waive our usual practice of deliberating in one meeting and voting in a subsequent meeting to allow the CEF to execute on the grants.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, yes, you have a discussion.
Okay, so now, take a motion to accept with gratitude the CEF grants.
I would like to make a motion that we gratefully accept the grants as offered by the CEF.
Thank you.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you so much.
Aye.
Yeah, it's great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Aye.
Thanks.
Okay, great.
Nicely done.
And thanks again for, for waiting for...
Look at all you learned about the solar project.
Yeah, more than you wanted to know. Okay. All right, so next you went.
Sure, I'll tell you about the evaluation plan, taking a short break.
Are we taking a break?
Christine just ran, you want to wait for it to come back?
We could do that.
Just stretch your legs.
Take a break. Oh, can I?
Yes.
I like the new policy of implementing breaks.
They're already doing, so they're going to implement.
Oh, you already got them.
They did this urgently, you know, the R's.
I'm excited about that.
Yeah, the R's will be...
Yeah, I just want to get...
I like the, the part where, like, we can kick the can down the road and do the work in the summertime, I like.
I know you do, I know that you and Rob will both very much like that.
Well, it was, we were just making arrangements today with the Congregational Church to see if we could use their space. He was, Stephen was very, like, yeah, he's like, I have to talk to my board, but we'll do anything we can do to help you out.
That would probably help out with me.
Yeah, so it's like, all right, thank you. But that's why, it's funny, I just, and I sent him an email tonight explaining so we could share with these people, and it'll be like, we'll do it next year.
We don't really know what it is, but it's going to be, at some point, we need your help. Good night, thank you, Jill.
Good night.
But, yeah, so, it's curious, now that they're in the sixth bucket, or what do we call it?
Block six?
Block.
I don't know, I still want to be optimistic about this.
Yeah.
So let's just, you know...
Let's just do everything we can.
Do everything we can to move this along, I'm really encouraged that they've already scheduled several meetings in the coming week, like I said, they're, they're on it, so I think that they're motivated to move it forward too, so, that's good.
Hey, we will have questions about the functionality of that bus canopy.
Uh, what do you mean?
Well, in the images that they showed, right, there didn't seem to be enough...
Turning spaces.
Enough room for the buses to actually line up and then pull out.
Yeah.
So we just want to make sure that that's all.
My suggestion is that as soon as we have that designed, that we go out there with cones and we put them up.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
And then we run the buses and we just see what's happening, you know, with those.
Practice, practice.
With cones?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Put a little egg on my cone.
All right, so, next item is superintendent evaluation planning.
So each year, the school committee needs to take part in the public evaluation and superintendent schools, so the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education provides the process and the rubric to use for that, and the summit of evaluation is part of a multi-step process that starts off by reflection and goal development and district improvement plans, and it also incorporates feedback on four administrative standards that the Department of Education has established, instructional leadership, management operations, family and community engagement, and professional culture. So the process has some flexibility for the school committee members, but as we provided in the packet tonight, the form is pretty consistent, it's the form that's used throughout the state, so we'd like us to use the form.
So we do that as a minimum, and then we're able to add to it if we have...
Yeah, so there's form, and then there's open responses, you can give feedback as much as you like. It asks, with regard to the standards, it asks for committee members to give a rate, one of four ratings, which would be unsatisfactory, needs improvement, proficient, or exemplary for each of the four standards, and each indicator under those standards, and it's important that everybody understands that proficient is, proficient is the goal. So sometimes people think, well, exemplar is the goal, it's the same as the teacher evaluation, if you're proficient, that's wonderful, so that's, that's what people shoot you for. But with regards to, with regards to the goals, they also ask the committee members to give a rating, either did not meet the goal, some progress towards the goal, significant progress, met the goal, or exceeded the goal. So this evening, we have included in the packet a copy of the form to be used by the committee members who are participating in the evaluation, so I think this year, we're going to have, I think Josh Kowalski and Mary Storz will be participating, and Sarah and Evy will participate next year. Along with the form is a progress report on the identified goals, evidence in support of the four standards could also be provided, but in the past, binders of evidence have been frowned upon in the process.
The what?
Binders of evidence in support of the four standards, so when you have the four standards, so what, what can happen is when you, so with the goals, there can be open progress reports and information, with the standards, it's often people use, you know, very formulaic documents that are generated by the district or by administrators anyway, so I think in the past, people didn't want to be overwhelmed by just those documents that were generated. But, more information, evidence could be provided in support of any aspect of the standards or the goals as people would like, so we're open to that. We are asking that the fields, for those people participating, would fill out the forms, and we can, we can share these in a digital fashion, Nancy, I guess that makes sense.
Are we sharing digitally?
So you should get this in by email.
Oh, this by email.
So you can fill it by email or by hand.
So you can fill out by email, you can put in your comments, anything you'd like to include. But if we could get that to Nancy by May 31st, and then she can compile all the information gathered from the five participating school committees, members into one document, which will then be reviewed publicly here at the June meeting.
Right.
So I would ask that in the next couple of days, if you look through what we have here, if you would like to see more evidence in support of any standard or goal, then...
So I would actually encourage everybody to take the opportunity to meet with Jim individually and to talk about exactly what you're talking about, the goals and, you know, things that have happened over the last year. So it gives you an opportunity to talk about that in the context for this evaluation. So...
And that includes Jim?
Yeah, I include, yeah.
Absolutely.
I do encourage you to both set up a time to meet with Jim and, you know, talk about this process. You're gonna be, you know, involved next year.
And we each generally try to meet with Jim once a month anyway, so, by ourselves, so that...
Right, I think, yeah, I mean, the broad comment for the new members is you should develop a direct personal relationship with Jim on any topic, really.
He's a lot of fun.
Yeah, he's a good guy, mostly. But, but on this specific thing... You're gonna send this to Josh and...
I will send it tomorrow.
Josh and Mary. Including Josh and Mary.
Thank you.
But I would recommend contacting you sooner than later because schedules are filling up. As Matt mentioned, I'm gonna be going on the DC trip with Matthew.
Are you?
Yes. Yes. So Matt was hot-pressed to find another male chaperone, so I figured I'd take the opportunity.
Oh, that's great fun.
Yeah, I think it'll be an interesting time.
I mean, I think, I hope.
I was able to avoid the DC trip all the years I was the principal. We had the assistant principal always go, but now we'll just take Josh.
It'll be...
So yeah, do you want to shoot me an email and set up a time in the next week or the week after?
That would be after the deadline anyway, that trip.
Right.
Yeah, you're right. It would be after the deadline.
Right, okay.
But it'll be right, like we tell the teachers, like, June 14th will be upon us before we know it.
When is, is that our meeting?
That's our last day of school.
June 14th is the last day of school, and the next school committee meeting is just two days before that.
Correct. And graduation is the following evening.
So when is our, our meeting is the 12th?
The 12th.
Right, the 12th. So actually, I mean, you guys know, to you, Melinda, I've been having prep meetings with the team the week prior, but it sounds like the week prior's not gonna work for Jim, so...
No, oh, the week prior. Yeah, well, Tuesday still works.
It's Tuesday, so Wednesday morning is the trip.
Wednesday, oh, really? Okay.
But we can do whatever schedule you want.
Yeah, no, I'm...
Wednesday, Thursday, Friday's the trip? I gotta put that in.
Wednesday, well, actually, on Wednesday, like...
The fourth AM. Fourth, fifth, and sixth?
But I'm hearing that there's a bus.
Or fifth, and sixth, and seventh.
I saw that thing and said, "Did you read that, Sarah, from the eighth graders? Meet at Logan at 3 AM."
3 AM at Logan's.
I tried to explain that to my daughter. She's like, "What?" But there's a bus from here? Is that what I'm saying?
There should be. Yeah, there should be a bus from here.
Isn't everybody taking the bus from here?
Yeah.
Oh, so, okay.
Yeah, yeah, okay. I thought you said meet at Logan's.
World Stride sent out a thing that said your child should be...
I was thinking that I had to drive to Logan's at 2 AM.
Correct.
I don't mind Josh.
I love that, too.
McCarlow Public Schools, probably 1:30.
Okay. Okay, so everybody should submit their completed evaluation to Nancy by May 31st?
Well, when you say everybody, the three...
And Josh and Mary.
And Josh and Mary.
Josh and Mary, people who are familiar. And Nancy probably could just set a reminder if, or that. Alright. Are we ready to move on? Do you have anything else you want to say about that?
I think that is all I can minister right now.
Okay. Policy reorganization and review. At our last meeting, we talked about how a new process for handling the policy review. So I wanted to find, I actually wanted to find out a little bit more about how Concord handles that. I noticed that Jim and Nancy, you guys categorized the policies.
Reorganized, yes.
Reorganized the policies.
Which looks awesome.
And I think this looks really good. This is gonna make it a lot easier to find the meeting. Yep.
Melinda, I can't answer you because Mary...
She was.
Yeah, so certainly give her a call, but I never even stepped into one of those meetings to know how they organized it.
But in your regular school committee meetings, everyone had to vote the policies.
Right, so at that point, they would do the two-meeting thing where they would present it, we'd read it, and then the next meeting, we would approve it. So, I mean, it was just known a lot of dialogue about it because the committee had already...
So the committee would meet, they would do the edits, and then present it to the group?
Yep. And we actually, I mean, I'm not so sure we got it a month in advance, but we would get it in our minutes so that we could review it before the meeting and then vote on it. So you'll have to ask Mary.
Keep it up there for a while.
I think they do a training exercise, training.
Yeah.
Did you just notice that?
Or it's a really...
It's a really slow burning fire.
They do have, like, other committees, too. The department does training exercises out there. I don't know. They've been training out there for the whole time that we've been meeting.
So maybe we can give Eva and Sarah a little background on just the policy world?
Right, so what our normal practice has been is each, we have 76 policies, and each year, we kind of rotate and we look at what needs to be reviewed, has it been reviewed in a while, what might be timely to review, given what's going on at school. And then, you know, we, each meeting, we read over, before the meeting, like, three policies and discuss. And then at the next meeting, we would vote whether to approve the changes. So we're finding it's kind of like, it might be more productive to take that out of our normal meetings.
Time consuming, yeah.
Yeah, and it's, you know, it can be mundane. Take it out of the normal meeting, have a process for during the review, presenting back the work that was done to sort of, you know, make it a little more efficient. So that's where...
In the beginning of last year, we also had a representative from the Mass Association of School Committees came in because they have a, they have a program where they will update all of your policies for you.
Legally, yeah.
And of course, there's, you know, in alignment with their policies, and, you know, there's a cost associated with that, and then you still have to review them. So when you hear, when you see MASC referenced anywhere, that's there. That's the association. And they have a policy manual that you can use as a reference guide. So, and as we explained in this, like, in our reorganization, we reorganized in alignment with the MASC, MASC policy guide. So that's, so it's just something to be familiar. If you're ever interested, you can go to their website. There's resources available to you there.
So is this, are these letter designations?
Yeah, we align them, yes. So I think there's, you can see, like, we even skipped the letters on there.
There are also a resource for us to use if you have, like, questions about policies. They'll sometimes, you know, take a look at one and give us feedback about one specific policy, for example.
So we have, so this is the reorganization piece. So we're, and we can still find, too, even looking over this list, like, I saw one that might belong, like, volunteers, probably shouldn't be in instruction, maybe should be in personnel. So we can still adjust that as we move forward. We also identified those policies proposed for review in 2019, 2020. So these are the most, these are the oldest policies. So we can, so there's a possibility we could review those, or we can always take another approach and look at a whole grouping at a time and write, and do it all together in that fashion.
Yeah, I mean, that, that makes more, one of the things, among the things we found in the last few years, in addition to the sort of protracted deliberation that we would have on, and based on the personalities of certain of the members here, we've got into long philosophical discussions on esoteric points, which...
You know, okay, that's fine, you know, but, but the point is, it took a lot of time.
But the other lesson, or another lesson that at least I extracted from that process, was we would look at, most recently, for example, no smoking policy. And then there's a drug policy. And then we're gonna think, "Well, what's a drug? Is a cigarette? Is a vaping drug?" And the marijuana gets injected in there, and is that smoking, or is that a drug, or is it a...? So I kind of think that taking policies as a block, because we find continuities or discontinuities, rather than, "What did we do two years ago in this one, and we gotta pull that one up?" I, my own preference would be to tackle a block at a time.
So how many blocks are there, Melinda?
There are eight.
That's perfect.
I'm saying there are eight because there are some that are small, and those would belong together.
Yeah, but that's a, actually, when you think about it, there's a lot of blocks.
There's ten, there's a lot of Js, but...
So the Js are two blocks.
But if you look at the Js, there's one, two, there's two, I think.
Hey, you had one more page.
J is two blocks, is two.
Three of nine.
But, yeah, but you also, we could never handle that many policies.
Well, that wouldn't be one, like, so I guess we'd be looking over, like, at a time, right?
Yeah. Nine policies.
So for the subcommittee, there's a subcommittee...
Yeah, you don't have to do 100% review in one year. We typically take three years to review eight blocks.
Right. So let's say there are 10 meetings, we have 11 meetings a year, but we wouldn't do it in July. We have a workshop in July. There are 10 meetings, and we want to review 24 policies. That means we have eight meetings where we could review three policies, and we'd have maybe no policy review in June, because that's a full meeting.
Good idea, yep.
July, we wouldn't. And then we'd have a floating meeting that we could not have.
Where we needed it, yeah.
Yeah, it's a really full agenda. So in eight meetings, we could be reviewing, voting on three policies. Then it's up to the subcommittee to decide how, what their timing, what their pace would be for...
So are you saying, so say the subcommittee meets and decides that it should be reviewing, let's just take A, no, actually, let's look at B. Somehow we have to merge this FIFO, this FIFO model here and...
Yeah, that's, that, and that might not happen right away, because we have...
Well, you've got coding, so let's just say, I'm just gonna take an example. We do the three As and the B, or the two As and the B. What does the, the subcommittee would deliberate on whatever changes, blah, 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 and then do what? Present to the full committee? What's the, what's your theory on that?
Yeah, I think you'd, Nancy would get it out to everybody beforehand, so everybody can be familiar with it, and then address it.
They'd say, "We reviewed this, we reviewed that."
Right, and then we vote on it.
But, you know, it doesn't prevent, so, but a committee member's not on the subcommittee. I guess it's sort of a, what would I say? I kind of would say honor system that if he didn't volunteer for the subcommittee, you should not then drill down...
Right.
At the big meeting.
Don't get filled soft.
If you really care that much about it, he's joined the subcommittee.
Get on the committee, right.
That would be...
But the subcommittee can only be two.
A subcommittee?
It could be any number.
No, it's an open meeting.
Oh, okay, alright.
Yeah, it could be three.
There's no limit anymore.
That's great, right?
Thanks to, thanks to our friends in Concord and the Attorney General, it can be any amount as much as it can be.
So it would then be up to the subcommittee to decide how they wanted to approach the 24 policies for the year. And then, you know, just keeping in mind that we'd want to vote on at least three of them.
I think we should decide how they're gonna approach it. And then the committee can do the work. I think we should decide how to approach it.
Okay, any ideas?
Well, I mean, I don't know if I, I mean, I just went back to the beginning, pretend, well, no, I was on page two, but if you went and did three policies...
There's no magic to the three, right?
Just eight, take eight policies, have three meetings, and do eight, like, do eight policies.
I believe, I believe, I again believe a block should be scrubbed at a time.
I totally agree with you.
And it might take two meetings to go through a block, or three meetings.
Right.
But you go block, and you don't stop that block till you finish that block.
Yeah, like Block A is two meetings, Block B is one.
Well, and the other advantage, let's just say it's Block, you know, F here, which has eight or something, nine. And we decide it's three meetings worth of blocks. But the subcommittee doesn't have to take three. The subcommittee should go through all the Fs...
Right.
To make sure they tie...
Right.
Before it decides to prevent.
Exactly.
Present three, it says, "Well, but by the way, this ties with something, and we're gonna talk about it next week," like that.
Right, that's good.
I further would recommend that we, the first thing the subcommittee should do is tackle Block B. Because bylaws and ethics, I mean, there's a lot of room there to look. It's a good framing exercise, and you would appreciate this, Christine, from your work on region. I mean, there's a, there's a different template. We compared that a couple of years ago. There's a different template for the region. You may want to recalibrate again.
Right.
Maybe not first, but that is a block that's kind of a, you know, an overarching, that's sort of the overarching policy to people.
So is there a agreement that we should look at a block by block, like section by section?
Yeah, I agree with that.
I think that doing it, doing it block by block is a good idea. I think also, if we have reason or an urgent need to...
Throw another one in.
Throw one in, we should be able to do that. We can decide on the fly if we need to do that.
We actually have to do it, Jim, this meeting, since we're meeting...
No, I mean, right, but we'll know ahead of time that we can add it in, yeah, yeah.
So since we're here now, is there, so David knows, identified B, is there another block, is there another section that we want to kind of highlight, move to the forefront?
We may not start, we may not.
We can start, it can be, it can be the most...
So I think J is the most over here. You know, that this committee should only meet, like, a few times, like, three times or something. And just, you know, unless they wanted to do less work and spread it out more, or it could be more intensive work, less times per year. Do you know what I mean? Like, meeting three times and looking at eight policies each time.
Well, shouldn't the committee self-organize? I mean, I don't think we should...
Well, that's what I thought I said a second ago, but then I thought I heard people saying we should decide now, so...
No, what I'm saying is, we should decide how to approach it. Is it by block, or is it by this list? And then that's the task for the committee to decide how they want to then parse out the work in their own meetings.
So then, do we want to prioritize?
Well, you've got, I mean, you've got a lot of Js.
Right.
That's gonna be a big piece of work, right?
There's 18 of them.
Though, but even on the overdue list...
So to me, yeah, there's 18, and if we're going by the section, there's 18 in that whole space.
And 10 of them are in the last bit.
10 of them are on the list, so you'll lop off a whole bunch.
So Js definitely...
Right. Right, I should say, I mean, I advocated for the block, and I agree, believe in that. But we should not be, we should be sensitive to the fact that stale policies should be reviewed.
Well, and I suspect that if we do Section J and Section B, Block J, we're done. That's plenty for a year. Because there's 18 Js, is that what you said?
Well, I said we should review B, but I'm rethinking it, because two of them are relatively, only one of them.
No, we don't want the ethics to lapse too much, though. That's significant.
There's a good thing to consider. The ones that are dated, the first back, are ones that people potentially thought we didn't need. Like, Home Page Publishing, Homework and attendance, which is what. So that might be another way to do it, to do some of the work.
Yeah, that would be, that would be helpful. So there is, I should say, for Eva and Sarah's benefit, one of the thematic discussions that we've been having through the years, last few years, in reviewing policies, is what's a true policy for us to do rather than a procedure, right?
Procedure is not a how-to. It's a, a procedure is a how-to. We don't want to do that.
Right, we don't want to do a how-to. So some of these that Nancy was mentioning are sort of prescriptive, and maybe we don't need to be telling people, you know, like, as Joshua said, like, "How do you use a pencil?" Right?
Right.
We provide supplies. We don't need to teach them how to use a pencil.
So that could be part of what the committee does, too, and ask, "Do we need this policy?" And if they don't think so, present, make the case for why we don't need it.
So would we, can we agree then we'll focus on J, B, and I just threw in G?
Sure.
Those three.
Does that, but to Nancy's point about C8, what are the ones you think are, you know, are obsolete, let's call it?
Webpage Publishing.
C8, yes.
Yeah. Sounds like bingo, right?
C8, my battleship.
I6, bingo. Homework policy.
J13 and J13.
J13, yes.
I think those two, last two came up this year.
Right. Okay, so that's, yeah. Right, so maybe I again want to rethink my statement. It might be useful to start with the J block, to let the committee get itself familiar with policies generally, before we tackle the big guy, which is the B.
Yeah, that's a good idea, David.
J has 18 in it.
So that'll take half the year.
And B has three, which means there's 21, and that leaves three other policies that we could add hoc if we need to review.
Sure.
But we just have to make sure that we do.
Then the only other, if we're all in agreement, then we're gonna pilot the policy subcommittee. We just have to fill the policy subcommittee.
You're looking at. I'm happy to do it.
Really, thank you.
We may not have to make that decision now.
No, but it would be good to see, get volunteers, I think.
If not now, by the summer meeting.
Alright, yeah, Sarah and I will start it.
Are we a two or a three?
Can you, can it, can it vary?
It can be two, it can be three.
If there's a policy that somebody is particularly invested in, can they...
Yeah, because it will be an open meeting, so everybody can count.
Yeah, absolutely.
Alright, so we'll start with the review, and then we'll get together, we'll make a calendar of days and policies, and make sure we get the right people in the room to give us feedback on it.
Great, thank you so much.
We'll learn together, we'll cover the plan for the summer meeting.
Sounds good.
Great. Okay. School fees.
So I brought these forward, FY '20 recommendations for fees. And I just wanted to make note of the old fees in FY '19. They were increases that we voted, or the committee voted on last year, just to see that there were changes. I put this forward to the committee because I put this forward to the committee because I wasn't recommending any changes for FY twenty. Melinda brought up a good point, and I did do some research, she's, she can speak to it, but she was questioning me on perhaps increasing the bus fee. And I have a lot of reasons why I wouldn't at this point. I think the biggest is, I think we'd have less participation of students riding the buses if we raised the fees. And I don't want to minimize.
It's a fixed cost, right?
Yeah.
Once that bus leaves the parking lot, it's a fixed cost.
So I would recommend that we keep the fees as we had this year, but.
When do you need to, do we need to vote it tonight, or do?
The only reason I would ask to vote it tonight, and you don't have to, is because we usually get our fee letter out to parents.
Right, okay.
I will tell you, the kindergarten fee letter already went out when kindergarten opened houses.
Last week, yeah, I think it was last week, yeah.
Okay.
But as far as the bus fee, usually we have the bus letter out, we're already collecting fees, you know, by late May, early June, and it's easier to get them before families disperse.
Sure.
For the summer. So if you were able to come to a consensus tonight and vote it, it would be much appreciated.
Sue, can you make note to see that we can get this into the April meeting next year?
Yeah, can we actually discuss it?
Okay.
But the agenda, I suppose, but I will do that for next year.
Thank you.
So, you know, one of the things that I'm interested in is if, you know, to what extent we're covering our costs for certain things. I know some of them are not designed to cover our costs, like the bus fee, for example, but, I mean, the fact is that the bus, our bus expenses have been increasing every year, they go up, and we haven't changed the fee in ten years, so I.
It's only for seventh and eighth grade, though.
Seventh and eighth graders that live within a certain distance.
It's all seventh and eighth grade in town.
It is?
Yeah.
Oh, I always thought it was within two miles of the school you had.
No, when the bus fee was originated many years ago, there was something where we had to do as the crow flies who lives within a mile and a half who lives outside. But even back then, it was a question of do we charge a fee to all students within a mile and a half? Or just all seventh and eighth grade?
Is, what's the statute?
I don't know, Dave.
So there's not, no state law that says you have to provide? There is?
We have to provide to grade six, I believe, six.
So K through six?
Yeah.
So there is a law, K through six has to be free transportation, right?
Yeah.
If they're outside, within the, or outside the mile and a half.
Completely is what I understood.
You can institute them a mile and a half.
But seventh and eighth anyway, is not.
Seventh and eighth were not obligated to provide transportation.
What does, does the high school charge us besides our normal?
I don't know, I don't know. Melinda, do you have a kid at the high school?
Does, I don't, didn't pay a, don't receive a bus fee for the high. I paid for it. I didn't pay a bus fee.
Oh, thanks.
Oh, so.
I think defining it is different, whether it be in regional schools or.
That's what I was.
Some aspects of the.
So Eva says there is a fee for the high school transportation.
Really?
I don't remember paying it this year, but it could be just, you know, I paid, I paid rent checks, like I was just paying stuff.
I mean, they keep coming to just, rent checks.
Well, so, you know, my, my thinking was, we have rising costs here, we haven't adjusted our fee, you know, we're charging three ninety-five for a bus fee, if we raise it to four twenty-five.
So just doing the math, and my numbers in bold for FY twenty are just estimates. But say we have a hundred and thirty-seven eighth grade students in eighty-nine by a bus pass, and that's thirty-five, one fifty-five. If we raise it to four and a quarter, it's thirty-seven, eight, twenty-five, so we're only increasing our profit by twenty-six hundred dollars. Is that twenty-six hundred worth it to possibly lose? Lose participation?
Do you believe it's that price?
Yeah, I would revisit this next year, I definitely would, but this, I just.
I know you said that, but I'm not sure, I know what's the difference between, you know, looking at it now, when we, now we started the new bus contract that's been, that's higher, as opposed to looking at it next year, won't the discussion be the same next year? If you feel that people would be deterred by the extra thirty dollars? I think if people have a necessity to have the bus, then that's what's really driving their choice, I don't.
I am not saying I would recommend it next year, I said I would.
Oh, you must want to defer the discussion for a year, I guess.
I would prefer not to have a bus fee at all. But I just, I really believe that people in the community support the school in so many ways to ask for another thirty bucks for that small change, which is what it really is. I'm worried that the participation would drop off, and then.
It would, it just might be a wash then, yeah, is what you're saying.
It would be a wash, and we're running buses because we have to have them in certain routes with less students on the bus.
Have we always had the six buses? Is that what the past data that you showed here is?
Back in, like, eight, nine, back then, we had seven, maybe eight, we cut two buses incrementally, and we stopped having the kindergarten bus because those kids started on a full day. So we used to have more buses, and we can't make do, I, I don't think at this point, Nancy could.
The ride's just too long.
The ride is too long.
No, right, I'm not suggesting that we, we're right in the right spot with our number.
The bottom level that we can go to.
Yeah, I just didn't know if we had more in the path, okay, all right, so.
We have a lot of negative feedback from parents right now with the bus fee.
About the ones that are in the last office.
And they will ask, you know, they all of a sudden have to pay a bus fee in seventh grade, then they expect the bus to stop at their house, things like that.
Well, you know, we're used to a certain level of customer service here, so.
Moving on with the buses there.
Okay, all right, so is there any other?
I think last year I emailed them because I didn't know when Chichilio was here, and I had contacted them. And I remember getting an email back saying that there's no, there's nothing extra we have to do.
All right, well, how do people feel about it? The bus fee?
I differ to the business manager.
Thanks.
Even though I, my eighth grader's moving off the, off the bus, I don't care.
I got kids on the bus.
You always.
So Melinda, how much did you want to increase it by?
Yeah, we still pay the fee because they come home, they come home.
I just thought thirty dollars, thirty dollars.
So, so let me just throw this on the table, what if it was just five dollars more? Because then next year you could do five dollars more.
The rule of nines, my friend.
Four dollars and that nonsense.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying, if it's a small increment, then it's going to address what you're trying to say, Sue, but over, over the next few years, we could increase it by twenty-five.
And if we had done that, say, for the last ten years.
That's what I'm saying.
Exactly, I, I know what you're saying, but I think what Sue would say to the five dollar increase is, right now we have it at a nice three ninety-five.
Yeah, but four hundred is great.
Is it?
No, I'm, no, and maybe there's a psychology to three ninety-five that's not there.
There's a psychology to a rate, like, just to increase, just when you say it's been increased.
Yeah, all right, well, just throw, I don't know.
And next year, I think the discussion should be more about a bigger increase, maybe, than thirty dollars to go to four twenty-five.
So why can't you do it now? Until you're, until you've retired that.
Someone else gets to see, you get to see how tough the think on it is, isn't it?
I would prefer not to raise it next year, too, Christine, I'm not saying.
Okay, okay.
I think three ninety-five, people have become accustomed to, you put it over that cusp, and.
It becomes a consideration. The only thing I'm going to say is, this is, this is a really tiny slice of people, it's only two classes.
Right, when you say become accustomed, I mean, you get a new audience of parents of seventh graders every year.
Every year, right, and some of them didn't even know about this.
It's a brand-new customer base.
Some of them are like, oh, there's buses, didn't know about that.
They usually have had siblings going up the ranks.
Oh, it's the sibling thing, yeah, yeah.
But they may not.
But they don't remember what the fee was.
First round, yeah.
You know, like me, I might not remember. I don't know, I mean, it's, that's why I brought it up for discussion, it's.
All right.
Do people feel like leaving it the way they, you know, we want to, or we kind of leave it the way it is?
Yeah, I think we should leave it, maybe if, maybe if a survey goes out or there's a chance to discuss it. Would you like to share? No, 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 would you still, maybe they'll save the extra money toward the Washington D.C. trip. If the service went up to four twenty-five?
Okay.
Yeah, we'll have to bring it.
Yeah, yeah, I say, you know, if a survey goes out about other things, maybe this could be a question, would you still use the service if it was four twenty-five?
They'll say no, just because, just to say no. All right, any other, I mean, I'm just getting the sense that people don't really, that people want to keep it the way it is. Is there any other discussion about the other fees? Do you want to talk about the fees, I mean, this, like.
No, I think, I think the fees are a right space, they don't cover everything, I mean, some of these, transportation's built into the budget. We often find ourselves, like, we have cross-country that covers a lot of the other sports that we have.
So much because of such a real occasion.
The increase, and Jim actually recommended that last year, the increase has really helped the athletics.
Athletics, good, good.
What is, on kindergarten, what is FNR, what does that stand for?
Free and Reduced.
So one, one, this is the upcoming year or the year we just?
This is the year we're in.
The year we're in, so everybody, and you only pay if you're full day?
They are all full day.
They're all full day.
Everybody's full day, nobody's half-day, okay.
Okay.
Didn't we increase that a couple of, two or three?
We started at like nine hundred, and we went up.
The kids are old.
Okay.
Are we covering our costs?
So we are, I mean, that's a fee to help supplement teachers' salaries, and yes.
And I talked to Sue in lunchroom, and she says that this fee is the right amount.
We're not raising the lunch.
No, just one on record. Uh-huh, okay.
We need to spend a little.
All right, so you want to, do you want to waive our usual practice?
I move to waive our usual practice, so, maybe our usual practice should be the other way. I move to waive our usual practice of deliberating in one meeting and voting on the next for the purpose of voting the fee schedule for the FY twenty scholastic year.
Who's a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, so can we make a motion for approving the fees for fiscal year twenty, the recommended fees for fiscal year twenty as printed in the handout?
Make a motion that we approve the fees, the two fiscal year twenty twenty fee recommendations as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Thank you, Sue.
Opposed? All right, thank you, Sue. Communications, oh, wait, summer meeting plans. So usually in the summer, the school committee has essentially a workshop, it's like a sort of a planning session, talk about our goals for the upcoming year. So, since it's not on the regular meeting schedule, we like to get people's availability for the summer. You want to just send that to Nancy?
Send them to Nancy.
And we can, yeah, and we send your availability to Nancy for the summer, July, the month of July. It'll be an evening meeting, probably around six o'clock, because we have dinner and a discussion about goals for the coming year.
Do you want us to put out a doodle?
That's probably, yeah.
Or is that violate the meeting laws?
No, that doesn't, you can do a doodle.
You can do a doodle.
Maybe we'll just do that.
All right, you put out a doodle poll? Yeah, that works.
We're talking evening, six o'clock, five thirty, six, okay.
And you should also let Nancy know what kind of food you like, or don't like.
Any food considerations?
So mostly, we're looking for the fifteenth and the twenty-second.
What was that, I'm sorry?
We're mostly looking where, the July fifteenth, twenty-second, that's those two.
I think, I mean, my availability is a little tough in the month of July.
I guess my, my suggestion is, before the doodle poll, send your block outs, send your vacations to Nancy. Then Nancy, when you have those, you'll know which dates, because that defines a lot right there, we don't have them in any.
Why don't we do a quick screen right now?
Sure.
So like the week of June, why am I in June, not June? The week of July, so I would say the eighth, but I'm at the M.A.S.S. conference. So July fifteenth, is anyone available the week of July fifteenth? Is anyone not available the week of July fifteenth?
I have to check.
So you're an absolute no, then?
It's a chemo week.
How about the week of July twenty-second?
You're saying, chime in if you're not.
Chime in if you're not available the week of July twenty-second.
So. One second. Oh, the twenty-second, I'm not, I'm not sure we're going to be back.
Okay.
You said July thirteen, fourteen, what was the first?
The first week was July, the week of July fifteen?
Fifteen, fifteen might work for us.
So Christine's not available that week, what about, and then July twenty-second, Eva, you might not be available that week?
Yeah, we might be, we might, we have college, um, search.
Sounds like fun.
We'd really like to get everybody for this meeting.
What about July twenty-ninth or thirtieth, it's the next week?
I can't do that.
Don't need him, we can, we could do that.
The earlier part is.
Nancy doesn't need to be there, it's.
So July.
We could just.
We'd really like you to be there, Nancy, July twenty-ninth or thirtieth, would, does that work for everybody? Eva, are you okay?
Sarah, you're not sure, you have, Sarah, you have one of the more restrictive calendars, I guess, right? And you don't know it yet, right?
But I don't, yeah, but that should be, that should be, I mean, if I know something, I can, I can work around it. But I don't have, I have my paper calendar at home, so I know.
All right, so we'll just, we won't ask about.
Paper went for the summer, too, on the wall, and I have to look at that.
We won't ask about the week of the eighth or the fifteenth or the twenty-second, we'll kind of go a little early, see if people have availability, or twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-first, and see how that, does that work, everybody?
Yep.
Sure. Just to narrow the doodle poll down a little.
Yep, yep. Yeah, if there's any dates we absolutely know you can't do, you can send them to Nancy.
Okay.
All right, good.
The other pieces, we have a couple of meetings to think about, but think about the issues you want to, you know, as it approaches, you want to think about what you want to bring forward for that meeting.
Goals for the coming year?
Yeah.
And do you want that meeting recorded?
Prefer not.
Probably not.
Okay, good.
Seeing these people eat, you really don't want to.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've seen them eat, too, right?
We're going to see if we can buy Cynthia a round trip to someplace nicer.
All right, good.
Get you a back massage.
So I think the only communication we have is from the M.A.S.C., offerings, charting the course, course, if anyone's interested in taking advantage of that.
Two people.
All right, that's the one that I sent you, it's definitely worth it, it's.
Yeah, you have to take.
There's four offerings there.
You have to take a training, that's a good one. You have to take a, does Edco still offer a training as well?
Yes, they do.
I went through this one, I really liked it, you guys can go together.
What's the timeframe in which you have to take the training?
Sooner's better than later.
Sooner is better because it helps you with, you know.
The first three months, I think they said?
It would be better to have it by the September.
No, because I'm looking at these dates, and the first available is the twenty-first, like that one.
Oh, yeah, no, you get, as long as you, I think, if you get it done before the next fall, you're probably fine. But if none of those dates work, then Edco also.
And then look at the Edco.
Okay.
Fantastic. Sign it the other way.
Thank you.
Superintendent's report.
So give you an update on a couple of things, so we have been engaged in the Director of Student Support Services search. We have a committee of sixteen parents and teachers and administrators and school committee members.
It used to be seventeen.
It used to be seventeen, but, so we had, we identified candidates to have in for interviews, we had two days of interviews, we interviewed five candidates. After we deliberated on those candidates, we identified one candidate who was a very strong candidate, that a good portion of the committee felt confident moving forward. We also decided to mean that it probably made sense for us to post the position again, right? We didn't want to be in this pattern of identifying one candidate to move forward and then go with that. So the committee decided we would repost the position. Last week, I reached out to everyone we interviewed and explained each of their status, and when I talked to the one person that we had moved forward, she informed me that she was a finalist in another district who was having their interview, their site visit on Friday of this week. So just like a bird in the hand is better than two in the bush for her, the same applied to us. So I connected with the committee and said, here's our status, even though we posted the position, we're going to look at the resumes, see if there's anyone else in there, but I'd like to move our process forward with this person. So I spoke to her today, and I'm going to meet with some people tomorrow to set up our own visit for her to come out and meet with the faculty and the staff and the administration and parents, and for us to have a site visit with her also, right? So we want to just be in a, in a better position, just to be in a better position to make the appropriate decision as we go forward. So that's where we are with that. It's kind of a fluid situ, we're involved in a fluid situation with we got to that search. So we have that taking place.
Do you know when that's going to be scheduled for?
I, I think it's going to be Monday.
This Monday?
This Monday.
Is that enough notice for parents and things?
Well, Tuesday's, Tuesday's a hard day for us because it's an early release day and there's all these events scheduled, so it'd be hard for us to host the site visit, to have people come on. It's, it's enough, I think, I think it'll, and then Wednesday might be too far out in the future, right? Wednesday, if she's meeting and she might buy some time to give us an opportunity to see if, she might be a good match for us, but she might not be able to buy.
Cynthia, what's your concern?
Oh, Cynthia, it's, well, it sounds like you've identified a finalist, but you don't want to identify a finalist because now you want to look at some other people, and usually when you've identified a finalist and you're bringing them for site view, you've, you actually make that public.
Oh, yeah, so that would be the, that would be the process we will go.
When do you make that person's name public?
Oh, yes, of course.
Tomorrow, once we, once we identify what the site visit will look like.
Okay.
And then we can communicate out to all the different constituents, like, here's who the person is, here's when they're going to be here.
She's prepared for that?
Yes, yeah.
Well, she's already a named finalist in another district, so the fact that she's out looking.
Another district, okay.
Yeah.
But also, just to be clear. But also just to be clear, and I don't think there's anything wrong with this, we can have a named finalist and still be conducting a search for other people.
I just didn't want you to hold her in the back here, but not neighbor within your...
I'll put, I'll remember to put you on the email as I send out to parents and such to invite everybody out to...
Yeah, tell me what other districts she's, oh, I guess.
You know what, I didn't even ask that question, I think, I feel that's not appropriate for me to ask.
Yeah.
I'm not saying we haven't conducted a search, I'm not... I just didn't feel comfortable, like, it just feels like you're tampering with things that really are in your purview. I didn't know, it just...
You're a classic guy, Jim.
Alright, you're a classic guy. Let me know too what this is.
Yeah, we'll let everybody know, like, once, once I have the, the schedule for the day, we'll let everybody know and invite everybody out.
Alright.
So, as we mentioned, as David mentioned earlier, we, we have a school committee meeting prior to town meeting, and at that, we approve the MOAs for the contracts. And we're pleased that the faculty now has the contracts, and we can move forward with that. That is a, that's a big weight off of everyone's shoulders there. Also, we had the town meeting and, and we discussed the solar project, which the warrant act moved forward, long-term capital moved forward, budget was approved, and the, the funding for the study of the Spalding Field was also approved, so that's all very positive. Then we have a whole host of, of school-based activities that have taken place and are taking place. So, we have the Colonial Road shows, you're all very familiar with, and then there's a list of field, I mean, this month, May is a, is just a variety of field trips from Plymouth Plantation to Faneuil Hall for the third graders, kindergarten, who's doing Chicka Chicka Boom Boom. And if you haven't seen that in a while, I really think it's Chicka on...
When is that?
It's tomorrow, it's preparing, like, that is...
It smiles.
I'm not sure, I think ten o'clock, but I'm not...
I love Chicka Chicka.
Chicka, and they've added a few, there's like a call and response piece at the end that's interesting.
Chicka Chicka Boom Boom Boom.
So what else we have, we have the fourth grade is going to the Harvard Museum on the fifteenth, the kindergarten's going to Drummond Farm on the sixteenth, the eighth grade's going for their visit at the CCHS on the seventeenth.
Oh, really?
Exciting.
Yeah, so that's big time for our eighth graders, and then grade two's going to the Science Museum. And then on the twenty-third, we have Field Day.
On what field?
Well, probably on the Spalding Field, it's, it's kind of an obstacle course just to go down there.
Can you integrate those singles as, make it some kind of fun activity?
Yeah, it might be two things.
How fast can the ambulance get?
So then we have, and then on the thirty-first, the third grade's going on a trip to Lowell Mills. Now, also, we have a variety of other events taking place.
Third grade going to the old self meeting house.
On, so we had kindergarten parasite this, this past week. We, as Matt mentioned, we have the Artist in Residence program coming up the week of the thirteenth. And, and it, it sounds really wonderful, the Artist in Residence working with the students, and it's really gonna just improve that staircase down to the gymnasium and the performing arts area, if you've ever been, anytime you walk in, it's like you walk into the medieval times.
Yeah, walking back in time.
Who's gonna install it?
The artist is, the artist is gonna do the work.
So he comes, he solicits artwork ideas and things from the kids, they draw stuff, and then he goes and creates designs based on their drawings, that's awesome. So he'll primarily work, like, he'll talk with the whole school, and then he'll work really with the eighth graders, because it's sort of, it's gonna connect them.
The this-year eighth graders or the next year's?
This year's.
So then also, this, on the fourteenth, we have the Elementary School Music Assembly, that takes place during school, and then we have the PTO, Teacher Appreciation Lunch, that they're hosting. On the fifteenth, there's a sixth grade off the visit, Elizabeth Soonabee, she's gotta be visiting the sixth grade. On the sixteenth, there's a third grade evening showcase for the Art Link Projects. If recall, that was another CF grant that, again, connected Karla's classrooms to classrooms around the world. So our third grade's connected with students in Russia and...
Oh, so that's where it comes in.
India, and there was a...
Collusion, is that collusion?
No, there was... Cooperation.
Fluting with the rest of the school.
Then on five twenty, is, there's no school for our kindergarten students, but the kindergarten screening is taking place that day, so we don't have the kindergarten students come in. And let's see who else will be happy. On five twenty-four, we have a Memorial Day Assembly, and then on five twenty-nine, we have our Outdoor Ed meeting in preparation for next year's Outdoor Ed. And then finally, so, in our March meeting, we did the presentation on, like, the exploration into the restructuring of the middle school model, and there was a dialogue around what are our next steps in really looking at getting a group together to develop a vision for where we see ourselves as a district, and where we see what instruction will look like for in our district in the years to come. So we've been having some internal conversations around getting people on board who are interested in being on a steering committee for that. And we're gonna be meeting with the Chair of the School Committee tomorrow to make sure that we're all on the same page with where we got to that, and then...
That's you.
Oh.
And then we can, we'll be open to that conversation, an invitation up to teachers and faculty and parents to see what type of work we might be able to get done during the summertime, and what type of groundwork we wanna have laid so that we can get people involved definitely to start.
Will you have some middle school kids on that? At some point?
Absolutely.
I just think that they can talk about what they love about the way it works now and what ideas they respond to.
Absolutely.
That's our point. Don't ask Elizabeth. Committee work's not her thing.
The other thing I do wanna bring up the date on is, so, we had a number, we have a number of retirements taking place this year. So, in our Health and PE department, we have retirement, so we've been interviewing for a Health and PE teacher, and we have hired a Health and PE teacher, and that's Megan Coffey will be joining us. We also have a couple of positions that are in, we're about to sail the deal on, so we have our French teacher who's retiring. So we're looking to close the deal on that one, we have a finalist that's been moved forward to me. We had a special education retirement in the middle of the year this year, and we have, we brought an interim person in for the rest of the year, but that position hasn't posted, and we have someone that we're gonna move forward for that position. I'll be able to update all this at our next meeting, but right now they're just in the pipeline. And then we had a first grade teacher who was out on a maternity leave, an extended maternity leave, and she's decided that she's not gonna return, so we have that position to fill, and again, we have someone in, in the pipeline.
Wow, great.
Jen Demers. So I, I think we've been very fortunate in the fact that we've, we've been able to bring really good people in this year to be in the school, and we've had the opportunity to see them and work, and, and we've been pretty pleased with the work they've done, so that's...
When is the, have you scheduled a retirement party for the retirees?
The retirement, yeah, the retirement party is...
Who are they, can you name them, I think, there's three that I know.
Who can I, you mean the retirees?
Retirees, yeah.
So it's, it's Margaret Haug, it's Nicole.
Chris Denaro.
Chris Denaro's retired, yeah.
Is there anyone else?
Jen, and...
Who's the specialist? Frances?
Frances Ingram.
Frances Ingram.
So Frances did retire?
So Jen Demers didn't come back, Frances retired.
And that, not teacher, but then that Johnson retired.
Yeah, Margaret retired, is retiring, and Nicole's retired. So those, and Chris is retiring, but we're not bringing someone on to the rest of the grade team.
Now, when you have, like, Jen's position in first grade, do you, what do you normally do, do you see if anyone?
He's tried, like, we are, Matt was showing, he was keeping his hands close to the vest, anything I say at this point in time will expose my cards. So what we do is, like, we bring in an interim person, we brought an interim person in.
Right, to fill the...
A one-year position to fill that role. The person who is in the role right now had been a paraprofessional with us previously, she was certified to be an elementary school teacher. So we moved that person into the first grade position. She's done a great job.
Great, that's great.
So she's in the, she's in the queue for interviewing for the positions. So I think that, it had, we have been fortunate, we've had good people, and it, and it's a nice way to grow our faculty
Right.
from the grassroots, and we've brought people who have done good work for us.
Yep.
I think that's it.
Okay, thanks, Jim.
Oh, wait, David asked a question about retirement, that's my question.
About?
About the retirement.
Party, right, that's what I was wondering about that, too.
So the, the Teachers Association runs the retirement party, and that is scheduled for Friday, May thirty-first.
Is that offsite or is that at school?
Oh, that's offsite.
I was gonna bring back one that we might be invited to.
I don't think so.
And that's not it, that's not what we're...
Alright, so it's not an in-school celebration, that's kind of...
It usually is, usually they have something.
It's usually sometimes.
That's, that's, we do that at the luncheon, yeah, at the luncheon, okay, at the luncheon.
Exactly, we do recognition for the retirees.
Yeah, we do that at the luncheon, and also PTO often does an after-school thing.
No, that's moved over to the luncheon.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, because then we, they have the artist piece and all that, so, Tuesday, yeah, Tuesday.
And that's all longevity, so we do twenty here, and we do...
Wait, did you just play it, Nancy?
Yes, because she was so good to...
Oh, the items, the items, yes.
Nancy, you started when you were sick, stop it.
Alright, that's it, I think that's it.
Okay, the Members Committee reports, anything to report from any committees? Like the region or anything?
No, the regions are really quiet, because they've been doing their local, you know, their, mostly, concrete. And they've had their transition with their new members and all that, so it's been kind of quiet.
Okay. Alright, warrants?
I do have two warrants, I have payroll warrant number seven one one nine for three hundred and eighty-three thousand six hundred and seventy-five dollars and ninety-seven cents, and a consecrable warrant number seven three one nine for sixty-four thousand five fifteen dollars and forty-four cents.
Does payroll, did that payroll warrant include the catch-up?
No, so teachers, since the MOA was signed, have received their contracts for the current year and are now turning in their contracts for next year. And the payroll that I'm doing this week will include all the retro pay. And after this pay period, all faculty should be caught up with anything that they've been paid prior.
So not this warrant, the...
Correct.
So you'll see a bigger payroll warrant for next time?
Okay.
Okay. And we don't have any action items?
Well, we kind of took mine, I was realizing that, and you can decide how you wanna run it, but...
That's why I...
The theory is that we, we voted, even if we waive it, we tabled the vote till the actions, but you know what, I don't know, that's sort of a silly convention. Is that, is that by any statute, or?
I don't know, I know, I'll check.
So you could...
I felt good to close those items out, not to revisit them.
Yeah, I think it's silly to table it, you're talking about it.
Alright, so any citizens' comments?
Wait, one at a time.
Hi.
Hi.
What's your name, where do you live?
Cynthia's from Long Street, did you update the contract yet?
I'll speak to that, the, we just today got a partial draft, which is incomplete. So we'd signed the MOA, the MOA, you got it, it's fairly specific if you actually follow the base contract. But the, but the block and tackling of amending the contract was left to our attorney, he just turned a draft. It's actually a question for Susan, are you gonna reach out to Linda for the changes, you know, he referenced?
I am...
One of us needs to get back to Linda.
I will get ahold of Linda, but I'm gonna produce the charts.
The charts, I understand, but there were these little housekeeping things that he needed.
I'm going to talk to Linda.
So there are pieces floating around, and we will, in due time, we will, you know, clear it up.
Alright, thank you, everyone.
Thanks for being here.
Do I have any other, any other comments, anybody wants to add anything? No, I have a motion to adjourn.
Are we going to executive session?
I move to adjourn.
Are we going to executive session?
Yeah, we have some minutes to do.
Okay.
I move to adjourn to executive session pursuant to MGL chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one A, with no intent to return to open session for the following purpose, purpose seven, to comply with various laws and release executive session minutes, I'm sorry, to consideration of release of executive session minutes from previous meetings.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, roll call vote?
Modell aye.
Gambino aye?
They're aye. Wilson aye.
Great. Thank you.